And encouraging more businesses that'll end up driving and diversifying our economy. It has become increasingly clear that this board remains incapable of being able to address those solutions. We view retail the fact that this is where you're choosing to spend your energy and the goals you're choosing to build are why our students aren't succeeding today, and we urge you to vote no against students succeeding.
Stephanie Allen? Stephanie present?
Alright colleagues, I'm, I can't help but to take a moment to share that we are absolutely a board of eleven individuals. Seven voting, seven, four non-voting members. While I am disappointed that there is general concern about our newest members not having a voice. They have already contributed positively to our board, and they're going to continue to meaningfully contribute positively to our board in a way that helps shape the improved, it helps shape improvement of our student outcomes in our school district. And we are operating from a place of, on the school board with information that has been provided to us up to date. And so I just want to make note for the record and ask, have we received anything from L C E as of today? Doctor Larson Mitchell, or excuse me, Council?
No, we, no, no, we have not.
Thank you, Council. With that in mind, I'm going to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Trustee Guzman?
Okay, sure, go ahead.
Trustee Cabasos?
Madam President, I would like to second your motion. I would like to know if you, the maker of the motion, would consider modifying the motion to pull item two point two six from the consent agenda for separate discussion.
Thank you for that request, Trustee Cabasos. At this time, I will not entertain a motion to pull two point two six. Do I have a second or please, Trustee Williams?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Williams. Colleagues, we have a motion by me, a second by Trustee Williams. Please cast your vote. Thank you, that motion passes six to zero. Colleagues, I want to take a moment, or sorry, six to one. Thank you.
There were two votes.
I did not see it. Forgive me. Let's do this again, please, for the record.
Will you avoid vote?
Excuse me. Colleagues, can you please cast your vote again? Thank you. Thank you. I see two noes, six yes. Thank you. I'm sorry, four yes. Five yes. Five yes. If that is right, I receive two noes. And five yes. Thank you. Colleagues, is trustee Watson on the phone? Trustee, yeah, okay, very good. Thank you, trustee Watson. I will, want to make sure that we cue you in when we have moments of discussions. Appreciate that. Alright colleagues. Colleagues, we're going to move on to warrants. Trustee Guzman?
Ratified warrants as listed in the bills payable, transmittable, and or memorandum number ten dash twenty-three dash twenty-four in the total amount of three hundred twelve million nine hundred one thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty cents.
Thank you, trustee Guzman. Colleagues, we're going to move on to item three point oh one. This is not an action item. This is the winter map growth presentation. Dr. Larson Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam President. So in regards to item three point zero one, previously, we shared fall map growth data with the board. Today, we will be sharing our winter map growth data, which based on our recent board retreat is an output, a measurement to tell us if we are in trouble. Progress is evident, knowing there is still a lot of room for improvement. Before I turn it over to Dr. Mansel and Mr. Manzi, we extend our appreciation to our educators facilitating this complex work in our classrooms, teaching and learning in our schools. So with your permission, President, Dr. Mansel, Mr. Manzi.
Great, thank you. Madam President, Members of the Board, Deputy Superintendent Larson Mitchell, for the record, Dustin Mansel, Chief Academic Officer. I am joined by Greg Manzi, our Assistant Superintendent of the Assessment Accountability Research and School Improvement Division, and we are providing an update on our county school district's winter map. The winter map growth results represent a formative measure, contributing to the vision of the Board of School Trustees through the student success priority area, specifically achievement and core content areas. Map growth was previously discussed during the November ninth, two thousand twenty-three regular board meeting. During the meeting, the Board of School Trustees received an update on fall map growth. Tonight, we are here to provide an update on the winter map growth results. Within Focus two thousand twenty-four, key strategies are outlined in the areas of strengthen the instructional core and focus attention on students and schools with higher needs. Map growth aligns to these strategies specifically by providing an interim assessment within C P S V's Balanced Assessment System. Map growth serves as a formative tool, used to guide and inform instruction, monitor student progress, and align professional learning opportunities for our educators.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Deputy Superintendent Larson Mitchell, Greg Manzi, Assistant Superintendent of our Assessment Accountability Research and School Improvement Division, for the record. Map growth is the signature test in the map suite, a collection of purpose-built assessment tools designed to support growth and early literacy for every student. With this aligned assessment, schools can conduct formative assessments in reading and mathematics for students in kindergarten through grade ten. Map growth is a computer adaptive assessment, providing a unique set of questions based on student responses to previous questions. The results of map growth are designed to measure individual student achievement and growth over time during three assessment windows, including fall, winter, and spring. The continued investment for Superintendent Jarra and the Board of School Trustees in a system-wide formative assessment system allows for the consistent monitoring of student progress and represents an area of stability for our districts and educators, allowing us to go deeper within our progress monitoring cycles. The map growth assessments in reading and mathematics generate a projected proficiency indicator for students in both the Smarter Balance Assessments and A C T. As we reviewed in October, the Smarter Balance Assessment and A C T serve as the annual summative assessments in the Nevada System of Accountability. Our students will participate in these assessments again in the spring. Map growth projected proficiency contributes to the Focus two thousand twenty-four indicator increase the percent of students proficiency. At the bottom of the slide, you will find the reference to each related linking study conducted by N W E A. As previously presented for the Nevada Smarter Balance Linking Study, N W A utilized the spring twenty nineteen results to derive the Roush Unit or RIT cut scores that correspond to the Nevada Smarter Balance Achievement Levels. For the A C T linking study, N W A used over half a million test events from over eighty thousand students to predict college readiness using an A C T cut score of twenty-two. For in the Nevada System of Accountability, students that take the A C T are considered proficient with an English language arts score of seventeen and a mathematics score of twenty. Each slide outlining progress and results will follow the same reporting format. The title of the chart represents the grades, content area, and measure. The metric, in this case percentage projected proficient, is the scale represented on the left-hand side. The aggregation grouping is described along the bottom of the axis of the chart, including the student group categories. The legend at the top of this slide provides the season indicator for the results. A solid line across the charts for reading provides historical winter results from the prior year for comparison. There were approximately twelve weeks of instruction between the fall window and the winter window this school year. On the first slide, you will find the projected proficiency results for grade three through grade five in reading. Here, we observe improvement for the district and a majority of ethnic student groups in the results from the fall season to the winter season. We also note a slight decline in English language learners and students eligible for special education student groups. The next data slide shares the grade three winter map growth results aligned to the Read by Grade Three Initiative. For grade three, we continue to experience evidence of rebounding rates in most student groups, including Black African American, Hispanic Latino, Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander, two or more races, and white. We did see a decline in the American Indian, Alaskan Native, and Asian student groups, as well as for students eligible for special education. Students in grades six through eight demonstrate a decrease in projected proficiency from the fall results to the winter results, but a slight increase when comparing to the prior year winter results. Our final data set for reading shows the projected proficiency on the A C T for high school students in grade nine through grade twelve. There was a slight increase in predictive proficiency rates from fall to winter. This was true of all student groups except the American Indian, Alaskan Native student group. Students in Nevada are considered proficient on the A C T with a score of seventeen, representing a lower score than the one used to project proficiency, which is set at twenty-two. In addition, the annual high school proficiency is based on the performance of grade eleven students on the A C T, while the data shown on the slide is representative of students in grade nine and grade ten that participated in the map growth assessment. The next set of results focuses on the projected proficiency in mathematics for students in grades three through five. We should proceed cautiously with all mathematics comparisons to prior school years. For the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year, we transitioned to utilizing an enhanced item selection process offered by N W E A. This enhancement remains computer adaptive for each student, while increasing the percentage of grade level aligned items the student may experience in the assessment. We do see an increase in predictive proficiency rates from all students and all student groups. Most student groups increased by more than five percentage points from the fall to the winter. Our final data set displays the projected proficiency and mathematics for students in grades six through eight. Again, we see an increase in the projected proficiency for all student groups, although the increases in middle school are less pronounced than the elementary grades that we just saw. It's important to provide context around the results for middle school mathematics. For the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year, all students in middle school are participating in the same assessment, removing the course-specific assessments that were previously utilized. Prior school year results do not include a projected proficiency for all students that participated in course-specific map growth assessments such as Algebra One and Geometry, often representing our highest performing students. The results of the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year should provide a more accurate monitoring towards state summative proficiency with the adjustments made to the assessment implementation.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Deputy Superintendent Larson Mitchell, for the record, Dustin Mansel, Chief Academic Officer. As part of our progress monitoring surrounding the availability of results from map growth, we regularly provide ongoing professional learning opportunities and progress monitoring tools to guide and inform instruction. The results from map growth are utilized by educators during professional learning communities to develop tier one and tier two instructional plans to differentiate student support and improve student learning. Student outcomes are monitored and included in mid-cycle goal review conferences between the principal and principal supervisors. Around this time, master scheduling for the next school year begins, including the review of assessment results to enroll students in advanced coursework, including Algebra One and Geometry in middle schools, again aligned to an outcome in Focus two thousand twenty-four. From April to May two thousand twenty-four, educators will administer the Smarter Balance Assessment for students in grades three through eight, and we will again administer the map growth assessment for the spring season in May two thousand twenty-four, again allowing us to monitor student attainment of growth, this time from the winter to spring. In June two thousand twenty-four, additional student outcome data will be utilized to guide and inform school performance planning. Thank you again for this opportunity to provide the winter map growth update, and at this time, we'll pause and take questions from the board.
Thank you. Alright colleagues, at this time, I see trustee Satori in the queue, followed by trustee Guzman, and trustee Johnson. And then trustee Cabasos.
Hi, thank you very much for that. Um, first kind of on observations, when it goes particularly in the reading, oh, sorry. Um, particularly in the reading, it seems, looking at the proficiency rate, or it seems rather, in a lot of the groups, it's either stagnant or declining in proficiency rates. Um, some increases in math proficiency, um, but and also again in six eight reading proficiency, there's some declining, so. But one of my, I guess, requests would be like, this is mostly proficiency, this is proficiency data that we are looking at. So my request would be like, can we see, you probably have analyzed as well, but more of the growth data, see, not just how many students are proficient, but how are we growing those students? How are we growing the students that are not proficient, in addition to those that are proficient? To, you know, it's very common a lot of times that students are not hitting those growth targets, even if they are proficient. Over two years, they will become non-proficient because after a year, they're not hitting those growth targets. So that's why I wonder if that's where we're seeing some of those students with actually a negative response to instruction is, are they hitting those growth targets each year? So that's really where I'd want to see more of the growth data in addition to the proficiency, so I can kind of make a comparison there. Um, and I'll let you speak to that. Is that something that would be available or?
Trustee Satori, I love that, yes, and actually, uh, line of thinking reminds me of the student outcomes training that we just recently had. That type of content is something that we can update and updating when we update the template of our presentations. That is, um, something I'd love for you to, it looks like staff is eager to also share that when that becomes available, when we as a board agree that, um, I believe there's agreement that this template needs to change, and that template can include that specific data, um, which will help us measure student outcomes a lot better. Um, is that something that the teachers do receive? I mean, when they get their reports, they have it a little more disaggregated to be able to do growth plan? She said.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Deputy Superintendent Larson Mitchell, trustee Satori. Yes, absolutely, there's a variety of reports that educators do receive in order to plan and go through their instructional progress and ensure that students are making progress as well.
And in addition to that, if I can also add to that, another report that I really like for MAP is the quadrant activity, so we can see that if they are, you know, high, if they are, you know, highly proficient showing that growth and also high growth and high proficiency, or if we're seeing, you know, seeing that decline, or it's low proficiency but high growth, so we can kind of make that comparison in those conferences. My other thought would be, can we see that segregated by regions or, you know, maybe municipalities, so we can kind of, you know, maybe pinpoint a little bit more where some of these deficiencies are occurring and kind of help us kind of target those that differentiates a little bit further. See, you asked, you answered the question about the line for previous years, well, that wasn't for the map, um, related to some of those issues there, why that line wasn't there on the map? I think that's too much.
Thank you, trustee Satori. Trustee Guzman?
Thank you, um, and I appreciate this, this, um, presentation. I want to ask about the, um, E L A. I am wondering if the E L A lump, um, in the winter scores has to do with our E L A rollout? And the fact that there are two different curriculums that are going on and could have been contributing for our students?
Madam President, Members of the Board, Deputy Superintendent Larson Mitchell, Dustin Mansel for the record. Wonderful question, trustee Guzman. You're actually correct. If the new tier one instructional materials for English language arts, English language arts are very comprehensive. A comprehensive program is also very overwhelming, and again, we deliver those materials sometimes a week before the school. Um, some schools received it after the beginning of the school year.
I know that.
Depending on their delivery, so absolutely, that's definitely challenging. Um, and so, yes, some of the results could be because we're just learning something new and it's going to take time.
Can I also ask in, in that E L A, um, if the, um, curriculum changed for our E L L students also? Because I saw the E L L decline.
The curriculum, our Madam President, Members of the Board, Deputy Superintendent Larson Mitchell, Dustin Mansel for the record. The curriculum for all students was the tier ones, um, instructional materials. So if a school previously had their own instructional materials that were designed specifically for E Ls, and then they transitioned to these materials, then it may be different. Um, if they were already using something school-wide, um, and this is now another new curriculum, yes, it's going to be different again.
So the math increases, that's because we actually had the math tier one instruction for a year, is that correct?
Madam President, Members of the Board, Deputy Superintendent, Dustin Mansel for the record. We have the math curriculum rolled out three years ago.
Okay.
Teachers are definitely more familiar with a curriculum that rolled out three years ago. It is possible that because we have curriculum aligned to the standards across the board and the assessment questions this year also were more aligned to the grade level standards, that we could be seen a result of higher outcome within mathematics.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, trustee Guzman. Trustee Johnson?
Thank you. Um, I had a couple, some informational questions first, at least one. Um, and I appreciate being able to see the, where we're hiding for proficiency. We happen to, are you able to share just like the three, five reading and math, um, current targets for each one of these spaces? So like, I see what the actuals are. Are you able to share what those goals are, so for three, five reading, grade three reading, six, eight reading, nine, twelve reading math? And maybe, I'm sorry, if I overlook information, so I apologize if that will mean.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Deputy Superintendent Larson Mitchell, Greg Manzi for the record, trustee Johnson. There are no targets established for this piece as part of formative reporting to the board, not part of the strategic plan in that sense.
So like there are no long-range targets either, so?
To this piece, trustee Johnson, just because there's, um, uh, I know some of us who sit on the board a little longer know that, uh, these are part of the board's goals, uh, that we actually need most establish in order to, we don't say, hey, we're trying to meet these goals. I, I love that you're thinking about that because that will hopefully, we can start thinking about benchmarks that we want to have in the senior students, along with an update to our strategic plan, which will be more comprehensive upcoming.
Alright, I appreciate it. Um, and then the other, the other thing, I love the reports that MAP is able to provide. They, to me, they, uh, they're pretty intuitive and they're very comprehensive. Do we share those with parents and students to help them, uh, to help our parents as partners kind of figure out how they can support, like use the trial buyout of this?
Madam President, Members of the Board, Deputy Superintendent Larson Mitchell, trustee Johnson, Greg Manzi for the record. Yes, we absolutely share the reports with our families. We have extensive professional learning that walks our educators through how we share the family reports out, how we do individual goal setting with our students as well, so they have an understanding of their progress and what might be needed for the next benchmark and the improvement areas.
Perfect. Um, and then I had the second to last question. Students with disabilities, students who are like emergent multilingual, or students who are, have title ones at schools have performed, um, lower than we would have liked for the past two years. Although, I will, it is great that we've seen growth from a year ago till today, and so growth matters most, and we have to make sure that we're making progress. Can you share the additional interventions? Because we have the same kind of consistent plan of, yeah, uh, looking at the, looking at results and then providing professional learning. Are there any other additional interventions that we provide for these more vulnerable groups who are, uh, underperformed, um, over the last two years?
Madam President, Members of the Board, Deputy Superintendent Larson Mitchell, Dustin Mansel for the record. Wonderful question, trustee Johnson. Uh, yes, um, this year, we rolled out an acceleration block with all elementary schools within their master schedule. It dedicates roughly thirty-six to forty-six minutes of additional time that's focused on tier two instruction. Last summer, we also rolled out tier two instruction expectations with all of our principals, our assistant principals, learning strategist, who also brought that back to their schools. We also offered an opportunity for all schools to opt in to centrally purchase tier two instructional materials, including the ninety-five percent group, which is a comprehensive foundational skills, uh, program that works on phonemic awareness and phonics. Um, that also continues to go on with the lesson libraries and the classroom kits that move toward, um, to the tier one materials for, um, vocabulary comprehension and fluency. At the secondary level, we've done the same thing. Uh, we've been working alongside a principal work group with establishing those expectations that will continue to roll out and support our middle schools and high schools. And they also had an opportunity to opt in to tier two instructional materials to support their students, where tier one instruction alone is not meeting their needs. In addition to what we've been doing centrally, schools have also looked at their strategic budget. Many of them have also funded reading skill centers where they are bringing students in for additional tutoring. I'm also quite familiar with several schools who are also doing before and after-school tutoring with select students who are struggling academically. Again, where tier one instruction alone is not meeting their needs, where tier two instruction and even tier three instruction is being provided.
And then the last question is, uh, so I really appreciate the way that we focus on students who have not performed as well as we would have liked just yet. Have we been able to analyze, uh, the results of students who are performing, wanted to understand, you know, what's working well and what we might be able to replicate from those and then help support, like, transfer to other student groups?
Madam President, Members of the Board, Deputy Superintendent Larson Mitchell, trustee Johnson, Greg Manzi for the record. Uh, part of what we do is go through our differentiated support and identify key performance indicators of how our schools are performing and how our students are performing. Those lessons learned are then translated in our principal supervisor conversations as they work in their portfolio of schools to help build and bridge that collaboration across our units, um, to ensure we take those lessons learned and apply them in our different schools. It's also part of our continuous improvement process that we share those lessons within regions to bring those strategies and action steps, um, that are working, and we see success, and try to replicate that as much as we can.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, trustee Johnson. My son is a middle school student here in this district. If you ever get a chance to meet him, ask him, uh, what his math, uh, test scores are, and he'll tell you. He's very impressed by the work that our educators are doing every day. Uh, trustee Cabasos, you are next.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, well, first of all, trustee Satori did an amazing job of just taking care of most of my questions, I'll talk to them. So I thank you for that, and I especially wanted to reiterate that I did like her, um, suggestion as far as disaggregating within, kind of like the hot slots, hot maps we've done before. You know, within the municipalities, I really like that. So I'll leave me just one short question here, for the benefit of those who are not familiar with it, uh, that Mr. Manzi and Dr. Mansel have done a good job of always explaining, giving us the updates. And that's when we were talking about the mid-cycle assessments, you know, can you elaborate a little bit on what that looks like, and again, who's involved?
Madam President, Members of the Board, trustee Cabasos, are you referring to the mid-cycle goal review conferences?
Uh, I'm curious what Dr. Mansel was talking about, yes.
Great question. So, um, the mid-cycle goals review conference is a requirement of the Nevada Educator Performance Framework with our evaluation system. So, um, it's engaged with principals, principal supervisors, teachers, and their supervisors as well. What's beautiful about the mid-cycle goals review is it lines up perfectly, so we do the winter map growth, and then we go over that data in the mid-cycle goals review conference. So principal supervisors meet with each principal, and they review their map growth data during that mid-cycle goal review conference.
Thank you so much. I did have a constituent question from a parent who felt that, uh, her children's teachers were not being involved. I'm sure that they were. Uh, I wanted to have that put on the record that the teachers are involved in that assessment. Thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Cabasos. I saw trustee Zamora in the queue, followed by trustee Brooks.
Thank you, and Madam President, um, thank you for the presentation. He, Dr. Mansel, you mentioned about some selective students being able to do tutoring before and after school. I think a concern that I was thinking about, well, I was wondering what the attendance was like, because I know transportation can be a big issue, and if these students are, there's no transportation for them, is there anything we can do as a district to help them to make sure they're doing this tutoring?
Madam President, Members of the Board, Deputy Superintendent Dustin Mansel for the record. Wonderful question, uh, trustee Zamora. Attendance is very difficult. We understand that transportation, um, at times, it may not be reliable. Perhaps there, uh, the bus has broken down on the way, maybe there's a staffing consideration, or perhaps they missed the bus. Each school works independently with the students they select for, um, additional support. Um, so as they identify the students and they are noticing that perhaps they're not making before and after school because of transportation, they would have to then consider how they can better meet the needs of that child, perhaps during a, um, an intervention block during the school day. If the student has an elective, perhaps that elective can be a, a fundamentals course in middle school and high school for English and mathematics. So yes, uh, school teams will look at that. So yes, school teams will look at that.
Madam President, if I may add that, trustees Zamora, that's why we were also very intentional with the acceleration block in elementary schools. So students are receiving that additional support during the school day. Our secondary schools do also have bus buses where students stay after school for tutoring. They can engage in that as well.
I have a follow-up, but that's okay. Thank you for that information. The attendance by grade levels, elementary, middle school and high school, do we know who has the least? And I'm thinking if these students are interested and they can, can they get bus passes for our TCU or any type of partnership like that?
Madam President, members of the board, trustees Zamora, yes, many of our schools do use funding to have bus passes for kids, mainly our secondary students.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, trustee Zamora. Trustee Sartor, stop again.
Thank you. Too much paper. Most of my colleagues already addressed the growth part that I think is essential to do a side by side for proficiency because you will not lose weight and meet your goal if you're not doing it at the rate that you need to. So that's my little analogy. So thank you for that. I appreciate that you guys provided the report with the end counts of the students this time and that was not done last time. So thank you for making sure that that was included. I think my ask for that would be to include what is the total enrollment, not just the total number of students tested. And I think it addresses also, I want to keep hitting this concern that is very glaring in our face is our chronic absenteeism. So who are the kids that were not testing? And how are we reaching those? The question that I had is more about, we had an abundance of money from the governor. And there was a mention recently about the A C E N accountability, which does provide some benchmarks and measures for growth. So I would like to know how is that being messaged to our educators and our leaders in the building so that they have a guide and a metrics to know where they should be hitting? And then I have a follow-up after you respond. Thank you.
I'm actually going to, Dr. Larson Mitchell, do you have any guidance from the state so far in terms of that benchmark that's been provided? Or do we?
Madam President, members of the board, deputy superintendent Larson Mitchell, trustee Asparza, Srothigan, Craig Manzi for the record. At this point in time, we've been issued a scorecard as a district. So we're using that information to perform our analysis based on what's been released so far for A C E N accountability. We do await further guidance from the state in terms of implementation and those pieces moving forward.
Thank you for that. My second question pertains to some of the comments that trustee Cabasos made. I would like to know, I would like clarification because you're in year three for math. You're in year one for ELA. I believe you might be in year one for new science curriculum as well. Is that correct?
Madam President, members of the board, deputy superintendent Dustin Mansell for the record. Trustee, we are in year three for the mathematics curriculum, year two for the science curriculum for kindergarten through grade eight, and we are in year one for English Language Arts K through twelve and secondary social studies and secondary world language year one.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Just a lot of new curriculum that is happening within, not to say that it's not needed, but a lot of supports that I'm just wondering about the professional development that's happening. The last question I have for you, for teachers, is the resources that they are being provided. Do they have the autonomy to utilize their school budgets to purchase some of the tier two intervention? Or is it centrally mandated that they only are supposed to be using certain materials as well?
Madam President, members of the board, deputy superintendent Larson Mitchell, Dustin Mansell for the record. Trustee, it's a wonderful question. When you're talking about tier two instruction, it is a site-based decision. There is a regulation sixty-one fifty where school teams, when they're looking at needing additional supports or instructional materials to support instruction or to support their students, those teams review those materials together and make a determination to use their site funds to purchase supplementary instructional materials.
Okay, thank you very much. Very good. And I want to check in with trustee Watson before we move on. Are there any questions at this time, trustee Watson?
Madam President, no, I do not. I just want to reiterate that I would like to have the breakdown based upon what trustee Sartor said. Thank you. By the way, your superlatives.
Thank you, trustee Watson. I appreciate the conversation, the questions that took place today. And certainly I'm excited and eager about developing new benchmarks as a team so that we can update the templates and ultimately have staff to present new formatting that will help us create informed decisions, focus on student outcomes. This item is not, thank you for your presentation. Thanks for the work you're doing and look forward to spring assessment data updates. This is not an action item. We do have two individuals who signed up to speak on this item. However, I'm going to add you to non-agenda items because again, this is not an action item. And so we do not need to call it a problem. Moving on to item four point oh one. This is the public hearing, public hearing and possible approval of the American Indian Alaska Native Policies and Procedures for Federal Impact Aid Section seven zero zero three. Dr. Raffalski. Dr. Larson Mitchell, Dr. Raffalski, Dr. Raffalski. Welcome.
Madam President, members of the board, deputy superintendent Larson Mitchell, Sean Raffalski, chief of staff for the record. Today, we're here for the public hearing on and possible approval by the Board of School Trustees of the American Indian Alaska Native Policies and Procedures for the Federal Impact Aid Section seven zero zero three. The Clark County School District has established Indian Policy and Procedures, I P Ps, as required by law for any children residing on federal Indian lands. The I P Ps have been updated in collaboration with stakeholders, including all American Indian communities. The update of I P Ps is conducted annually as a requirement according to the Impact Aid Section zero seven zero zero three. The Clark County School District has established Indian, has described it in C C S D Policy one three one one. To provide you with an overview on the proposed policies, I'm joined this evening with Dr. Brad Keating, Executive Director of the C C S D's engagement.
Thank you, Dr. Raffalski. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Larson Mitchell, Brad Keating for the record. The Federal Impact Aid Section seven zero zero three requires districts to perform an annual review of their Indian policies and procedures. Congress enacted the I P P requirements to ensure that Native American and Alaska Native students participate in the district's general education program on an equal basis with other students and that their parents and their tribes have input and the mechanism for providing input into the district's general education programs. The I P Ps, as has been mentioned, have been updated in collaboration with stakeholders, including C C S D's American Indian communities. C C S D consults with local tribal officials and parents and guardians of American Indian children to develop, update and promote these I P Ps that further the planning and development of not only the I P Ps, the general education programs we have in the district and the activities led by the Indian Education Opportunities Program here in the district. The I P Ps being heard this evening were also shared with both federally recognized tribes in the native community and input sessions were held on November sixth and thirteenth. Based on the input, this document in front of you, there are three minimal changes I wanted to bring to your attention this year. Update number one is the method of communication with the Moapa Band of Paiutes. The Moapa Band requests the C C S D communicate via email directly with their education committee, who will then distribute the information to their executive assistant, who will then distribute information to their tribal council. Number two, there was a location change for the Las Vegas Paiute Tribe by annual community engagement meeting. That's been changed from their multipurpose room to the tribal council chambers. And update number three, the method of communication has been updated for the Las Vegas Paiute Tribe to include their post mail. Previously, all communication was just sent via email. We've added the post mailing as well to the tribe. So prior notice of this public hearing was given in the Las Vegas Review Journal from January thirteenth to nineteenth, as well as Nevada Legal News from January sixteenth to twenty-second. If there are any questions, I'm going to be the answer.
Thank you, Dr. Raffalski. Thank you, Dr. Keating. All right, colleagues, I failed miserably here. Item four point oh one is an action item. We do have public comment. We do not have public comment on this item. However, I don't want to miss a chance for individuals who are in the public who would like to submit a yellow card to do so now. Move on to public, excuse me, discussion by the board. And after discussion, we will close, conduct a public hearing and we can close the public hearing actually, once we have a discussion from the board and no public comment is available. All right, colleagues. I see trustee Williams in the queue. Ready to make a motion? Okay, well, allow me to, I don't see anybody else in the queue this time. This is the time and place to conduct a public hearing on and discussion of and possible action on approval of the American Indian Alaska Native Policies and Procedures for the Federal Impact Aid Section seven zero three, seven zero zero three. It's a public, noting no public comment or discussion from the board. This public hearing is now closed. Trustee, trustee Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve item four point zero one, public hearing. I'm sorry, on the approval of the American Indian Alaska Native Policies and Procedures for the Federal Impact Aid Section seven zero zero three.
Thank you, trustee Williams. Trustee Guzman? A second. Thank you, trustee Guzman. Colleagues, we have a motion by trustee Williams, a second by trustee Guzman. Please cast your vote. Thank you. That motion passes seven to zero. And I lost my pen. Could I be so offended? Thank you so much. Thank you very much for your presentation. I've got multiple pens. Thank you for helping a friend out here. We're going to move on to item four point oh two. This is a public hearing on and possible approval of a new memorandum of agreement between the Clark County School District and the Education Support Employees Association regarding the recruitment and retention incentive to school-based educational support professionals. Okay, this is an action item and we will be taking public comment on this item. If anybody has an advocate who would like to, before I continue on this item, I'd like to give members of the audience the opportunity to submit their yellow cards. Otherwise, once we begin, we will no longer be able to take yellow cards. Trustee Guzman?
Thank you, President Garcia Morales. I will abstain from this vote as I work for the Nevada State Education Association.
Thank you, trustee Guzman. Okay, colleagues, I'm going to turn this over to David Hall. Mr. Hall will explain the M O A to us.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, deputy superintendent Larson Mitchell. Nevada revised statute N R S two eighty-eight point one five three requires that any new extended or modified collective bargaining agreement between a local government employer and an employee organization be approved by the governing body of the local government employer at a public hearing that the chief executive officer of the local government shall report to the local government the fiscal impact of the agreement. The Board of Trustees of the Clark County School District approved a negotiated agreement with the Education Support Employees Association, or E S C A. An agreement has been reached pending approval by the Board of Trustees and the superintendent of schools regarding a memorandum of agreement between C C S D and E S C A regarding the provision of recruitment and retention incentives for school-based education support professionals. E S C A and C C S D drafted a new memorandum of agreement memorializing the agreement between the two parties that education support professionals assigned to a specific school site will be eligible for incentive for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. The terms of this agreement will be effective prospectively from the date of approval and signature. There are additional costs in the amount of approximately twenty-one point four million dollars associated with entering into this memorandum of agreements. This is the time and the place to conduct a public hearing on discussion of and possible action on approval of the new memorandum of agreement between the Clark County School District and the Education Support Employees Association regarding the provision of recruitment and retention incentives to school-based education support professionals.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Colleagues, I don't have public comments. Is there any discussion or a motion to move this forward? Trustee Williams? Very, very motion? So we don't have any comment?
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve item four point zero two.
Thank you, trustee Williams. Trustee Cabasos, did I see her? Yes. I'm a second. Thank you, trustee Cabasos. Colleagues, we have a motion by trustee Williams, a second by trustee Cabasos. Please cast your vote. Thank you very much. That motion passes six to one abstention. Is that right? All right. Warming up. Almost done. Item four point oh three, colleague. Thank you, Mr. Hall. I know you're going to stick around for this item. This is, before I continue, I want to make sure that anybody in the public who has not submitted the yellow card for public comment will submit that now. Otherwise, we will close public comment, yellow cards, submissions, and we will move on. All right, this is item four point oh three, public hearing on and possible approval of the memorandum of agreement between Clark County School District and the Clark County Association of School Administrators and Professional Technical Employees regarding reclassification of entry, school assistant principals and increasing cost of living adjustments in second year of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five negotiated agreement. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, deputy superintendent Larson Mitchell. Nevada revised statute N R S two eighty-eight one five three requires that any new extended or modified collective bargaining agreement between a local government employer and an employee organization be approved by the governing body of the local government employer at a public hearing and that the chief executive officer of the local government shall report to the local government the fiscal impact of the agreement. The Board of School Trustees of the Clark County School District, or C C S D, approved a negotiated agreement with the Clark County Association of School Administrators and Professional Technical Employees, or C S A P. An agreement has been reached pending approval by the Board of Trustees and the superintendent of schools regarding a memorandum of agreement between C C S D and C S A P regarding the reclassification of elementary school assistant principals and an increase in the cost of living adjustment in the second year of the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-five negotiated agreement. C S A P and C C S D drafted a new M O A, which reclassifies elementary school assistant principals from step forty on the approved salary schedule to step forty-one. This reclassification will take place on the first day of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. Additionally, the M O A amends the cost of living adjustment in the second year of the two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-five negotiated agreement from two percent to three percent. The increased cost of living adjustment will be effective the first paycheck in August two thousand twenty-four. The terms of this agreement will be effective prospectively from the date of approval since signature. There are additional costs in the total amount of approximately four million dollars associated with entering into this new memorandum of agreement. This is the time and the place to conduct a public hearing on discussion of and possible action on approval of the new memorandum of agreement between the Clark County School District and the Clark County Association of School Administrators and Professional Technical Employees regarding the reclassification of elementary school assistant principals from step forty to step forty-one and an increase in the cost of living adjustment divided in the second year of the two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-five negotiated agreement from two percent to three percent.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I'm going to turn it over to public comment. We have one yellow card. Julius Matthews?
Madam President, members of the board, I apologize for the wrong agenda item. I'm calling on item four point zero five.
We will change that for you. Thank you. All right. Colleagues, if I don't see a discussion and looking for a motion, trustee Williams? Oh, excuse me. Trustee Guzman?
Thank you, President Garcia Morales. I'd like to make a motion on four point zero three, public hearing. Thank you, President Garcia Morales. I'd like to make a motion on four point zero three, public hearing on and possible approval of the memorandum of agreement between the Clark County School District and the Clark County Association of School Administrators and Professional Technical Employees Regarding Reclassification of Elementary Assistant Principals and Increase in Cost of Living Adjustment in Second Year of twenty twenty three to twenty twenty five negotiated agreement.
Thank you, trustee Guzman. I failed to mention, colleagues, before I asked for the second, which I saw already, that this public hearing is now closed. Trustee Williams?
A second.
Thank you, trustee Williams. Colleagues, we have a motion by trustee Guzman, a second by trustee Williams. Please cast your vote. Thank you. That motion passes seven to zero. We are now going to move on to item four point oh four. That's professional learning from the Council of Great City Schools. This is a discussion regarding the board implementation timeline and next steps of our work and student outcomes. I believe AJ is on the phone. Mr. Crabbell, are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, take it away, please.
Do you all have a copy of the implementation timeline before you?
Allow us to pull it up. I believe it is. We've opened it up. We do have it in our supporting material online and on board docs. I would just pull it up. It's now being screened. Thank you for bringing that. I know it's very small to resume in a little bit more. Yeah, that's great. Okay, colleagues, yeah, those of us who have don't have young eyes anymore, we need all this support we can get. All right, go ahead.
The purpose of the implementation timeline is to take all of the things that you all have indicated that you want to accomplish and put them into a document so that we can actually track over time whether or not the board is getting done things that you all said you want to get done to be more focused on improving student outcomes. And so in the document, the first page is just a high-level summary. But the second page of the spreadsheet gives you a full-blown display of what are all the activities that you all have indicated that you want to take on and how we have scheduled them out over a period between now running all the way through August of next year. This is what we'll use to track progress. And so if you're wondering what's going to happen next, at any time, you can come and look at this document and have insight into what are the major projects that you all be taking on. Now, in order to, this is just the calendar. In order to actually accomplish this, there's going to be a lot of work that you all will have to do, and our job is to support you in it. But the work is yours to do. The decisions are yours to make, not ours. We are just facilitators for this work. And so I can go through this, but if you all have already read through it and and have an understanding of it, then I don't want to waste your time reading it verbatim. If there are questions, I'm happy to be responsive to them.
Thank you. Thank you, AJ. I want to take a moment to also acknowledge that we have this week the officers met to discuss the workaround community, the community meetings, and we heard our colleagues let it clear from our trainings earlier this month that we want to move this forward expeditiously and implement the community sessions as soon as possible. Now, we know that the one item that we need to ensure that every member can please complete the assignments that AJ Ben has sent us so that we can capture with all the community members and community groups we'd like to hear from. That's a critical component that will help us move over to the community meetings, which will expedite our work. So thank you to the officers for meeting and having the discussion. We have some rich conversations around that, and I just want to acknowledge that and also acknowledge that our colleagues are ready to do this work. I see trustees Barzus, Ruffigan on the queue, followed by trustee Guzman Adams and trustee Galasos.
Thank you, President Garcia Morales. So I did my homework and I have, I have a lot of questions and then I'm going to call off AJ one to you is that I'm concerned about when I questioned some of the validity of the research that was provided. You provided a document that had articles, and I looked at the articles, and I want to know, are there, is there white papers? What is the research that this student governance model has actually been implemented over time? And then I have a question for the board after you respond to that. Thank you.
So there are two ways that I invite you to reflect on that. One is looking through the research that I provided you all with that looks at the specific practices. So, for example, one of the things that we recommend is that you all listen to the community that you represent. As you go and look through the evidence, what it suggests is that boards that listen to their community and really do the work of representing the community's vision and values tend to do a better job of being able to gain the confidence of the community. One of the other things that we recommend is that you all write down goals, that you make them, that you listen to the community and you take its vision and values, you write them down, you make them plain. And neither of these are activities we find controversial, though they're certainly challenging. But we would submit to you that the research base for them is fairly strong. The public officials taking the time to listen to your community is a well-examined practice. That goal setting is a well-examined practice. Probably one of the largest uses of your time that we'll eventually recommend is monitoring progress towards your goals. This is the practice of spending a significant amount of your time each month looking at evidence to figure out, is the district actually serving children in the way that the board has indicated in your priorities? And again, you can look to the research literature that we've provided, but the evidence that monitoring progress towards your goals is a efficacious process is quite sturdy. And so if there's specific, if, if any of these, if there are specific practices that we're recommending that you weren't able to find in the research literature, feel free to shoot me an email about those specific ones, and I'm happy to point you to the particular item. But all of the things that we recommend, the evidence for them is in the list of articles and research documents that I provided for you. But to your point, if there's a specific practice that you're curious about, feel free to email me, and I can identify which specific document that you should, to help narrow your search, because I do recognize that there are a lot of documents there. The other, that's, so that's the first thing I would have you do is go back to the original source material. And we certainly don't encourage you to take our word for it. We'd recommend that you certainly do your own homework and identify for yourself whether or not practices such as goal setting and goal monitoring and listening to your community, whether or not you all find that they are supported in the literature. And if you read the literature and you find that such practices aren't supported, let us know, because we're always happy to change our minds on these things. But that's the first thing I would encourage. The second thing I would encourage is feel free to reach out to some of your colleagues. Best practice is often best revealed by visiting with your colleagues around the country who are doing similar work. And so if there are things that you're curious about, whether listening to your community or goal setting or goal monitoring, things of that nature, and you're wondering whether or not some of your other colleagues at large urban across the country, whether or not they're finding success with that, again, we wouldn't recommend you take our word on it. Shoot me an email, let me know, and I'll gladly connect you with some of your colleagues at other large urban districts across the country to, so that you can get a firsthand insight from them, what their experience has been.
Thank you, AJ, for that. And actually, I don't not disagree with the concept of listening to your community, because that is essential, and it's
Absolutely.
I exist as an appointed trustee because there was frustration that that was not happening, and there was a lack of transparency. So I will get back with you. I can follow up with you individually. And the reason I'm asking that question is I want to ask the, we didn't have an opportunity to have debriefs after the retreat. Is the student outcomes governance model replacing the school governance model?
I don't know what the school governance model is.
I believe that question was directed to the board. Stop again, correct?
Right, yeah.
We have not, we have dedicated our focus and energy to establish goals for the school district through student outcomes work. And we've adopted this language and this, this agreement, this contract last year for us to focus. We have not talked about making policy changes that are specific to, what did you say was the policy? What are you?
So I'm referring to actually page ten of twenty one where it talks about a board of trustees role is many things to ensure the vision and the mission of the board. But a piece of that is to ensure the budget, financial accountability. One of the important activities in translating and educational goals of schools into reality is the adoption of the budget and making sure that the district is physically sound and the boards utilize fiscal resources based on student needs and district policies and goals. My concern, having done my homework, because yes, I did look at some of the other school districts across the nation that are starting to implement this model, is that does not necessarily become the role anymore. And my concern is, are we shifting the role in, in making sure that we are going to provide oversight to the one employee that we would supervise, which is the superintendent?
Trustees Barzus Ruffigan, this is, I appreciate the questions that you're asking, and they may be more nuanced than you actually that we are more nuanced in nature that are, you're, I don't know that we're connecting, and I'm not really making sense of what fully of your line of questioning. However, I am willing to sit with you separately to discuss your concern. No, we, let me, let me stop talking about, no, actually, it is my turn to speak at this time. And I allowed you to speak. I'd like to have a chance to speak. I'd like to invite you actually to meet with me and or any other member who has proved this work so that we can go over more thoroughly about what the intention is. And if we need to bring it before a public meeting to discuss this work, we can do that again, too.
So I hear what you're saying. I'm happy to meet with you one-on-one and have this conversation. But again, I have concerns that we are doing things and not in a transparent way and moving to a different model. And that has not been vetted through the community. And specifically on the document that is in front of me, it does say that there will be in the November twenty twenty four to June twenty twenty five, the design and final superintendent evaluation process for F, for the fiscal year of twenty five, twenty six. As to my knowledge, that review of the superintendent's evaluation has not occurred as of yet.
Correct. Trustees Guzman Adams?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm grateful for the, the investment that we're making as a group, all eleven of us. I'm really excited about the movement forward. My question is, AJ, if if not all eleven finish their homework, can we still move forward or we can't move forward unless all eleven complete the homework assignments?
So certainly, our recommendation is that all eleven of you take on the work of listening to your community and really trying to glean from your community the vision and values of your community. We would not want any part of your community to be unrepresented because a board member chose not to participate. And so our strongest recommendation is to have full participation in listening to the vision and values of your community. Your community deserves to be heard. It's the community's schools, the community's resources, the community's children. You are not the school district. You are the representatives of the community. And so they really deserve to be heard. So our strongest recommendation is for all eleven board members to participate in that process. That being said, the board is certainly at liberty to proceed in this process without one hundred percent participation. We recommend all eleven of you choose to engage in community listening. We think that is what public officials should do. That's the responsible behavior. But if the board, if there are board members who choose not to, then the board is certainly well within its rights to respect the decision of a board member not to engage in community listening and to proceed with only ten members instead of eleven. But again, this is such a sacred trust that public officials have, that not listening to the community, it really doesn't set your school system and certainly not your students up for success.
Thank you. Trustee Galasos, I'm all ready to speak, and then trustee Guzman.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to trustee Guzman Adams. I don't know if that last comment about not doing your homework was directed at me, because I know I received a message today about clarifying my homework. I've done a lot of homework in my days. So I believe that, and I will get over to a question for Mr. Crabbell, having to do with costs. Not exactly what trustee Guzman Adams had, but I know that, I know that due to two no votes on this governance, I know that we ended up paying twenty thousand more instead of the original sum of forty thousand. So let me zero in on something that trustee, as far as touched on, and that was on the timeframe having to do with the evaluation plan for the superintendent. Where does the, and I did bring this up, AJ, briefly, and you addressed it. And I believe that our Madam President addressed it also at our training. Where does the focus twenty twenty four and the goals that were set at that time, how does that get folded into now this new timeline and this new evaluation?
Yeah, so as I understand it, and let me first check for understanding. You all adopted a strategic plan, I believe, in twenty nineteen that was set to expire in twenty twenty four. Is that accurate?
Yes.
And so what normally happens with, this is normal behavior of school systems, is that they'll set a five-year plan and then around the time that that is starting to sunset, that they will then set a new five-year plan. And so there is a small amount of overlap in the timeline, but again, that's a normal and a healthy thing. So what typically would happen is that the remainder of this school year is fully governed by the existing priorities that the board set in twenty nineteen. What you all are doing is starting to set priorities that are intended to govern what will happen in SY twenty four, twenty five and moving forward for the next five-year period. And so there is a small overlap. You're right to wonder, is that a little bit awkward? So the practical matter, your evaluation of your superintendent and things of that nature for the next six months really still are governed by your existing plan, because there's nothing to replace it. But once a new one comes in place, the intention is that next year, your evaluation of your superintendent would be based on the listening that you all do now and the priorities that you set now for it. Is that responsive to your inquiry?
Partially, Jay, and I thank you for that elaboration. Thank you. I think there's still some more discussion that needs to happen on that, and I don't want to take up too much time. Touching briefly, just on a couple of other short questions here on what trustee, as far as the stuff again, had also brought up as far as having to do with community. I am one of three trustees who has been having community meetings. I was able to participate in two of them. I was not able to participate in the third, but the other two trustees did have that other third community meeting, which I understand was extremely helpful to our Spanish-speaking community. So I wanted to ask AJ, if you are, and I believe you did state to me at the training, that you were familiar with the type of community listening we had done in the past. How do you see this community structure that we're all, it sounds like we're starting from square one again. We've done a lot of community listening, but for me, it's been like, what kind of listening? Has it been a with pre-planned answers, or has it been an actual survey where we're listening to our educators and to our constituents? So how do you foresee, and I did attend the officers' meeting the other day, and there was some good conversation having to do with how that could possibly be structured. But if you could, kind of in a nutshell, how do you see this community listening being different?
So there are a couple of parts to this. One, how do you account for previous listening? Two, how is this listening different? And so I'm happy to respond to both of those. So in terms of previous listening, that's a decision for y'all to make. And so some boards will look at all of the documents and all of the artifacts around listening that have happened in the previous six-to-twelve-month period, and they will pull that into this process going forward. And so that's not unusual, but that's a decision for y'all to make. That's not a decision for us to make. So you all have to decide kind of which artifacts do you consider recent enough and valid enough that they should be pulled into this process? And so that's what happens with listening that's already taken place. That's a decision that you all will have to make. In terms of what the process looks like going forward, In terms of what the process looks like going forward, that's literally for you all to design. That what we're trying to walk you through is a process of being thoughtful about what you all want that to look like. But you all need to decide who's being listened to. You need to decide when and where that happens. You need to decide what the script is. You all need to decide what the questions are. All of that is for you all to decide. So we'll certainly support you and facilitate you through it. We do this a lot. But at the end of the day, you all are the representatives of the community. We aren't. So we aren't in a position that we can tell you what that listening should look like. We know what questions to ask to help you all make that decision for yourselves, and we will help facilitate you all making that decision. But you all have to design the listening process, not us, because you all will have to be the ones who rely on it, not us.
Thank you, AJ, and I'm going to reiterate what you just said, when you said you all. So I'm going to change it as a former US teacher to we all are hopefully going to be able to decide on those questions and what it's going to look like. In part, our homework was in specifying which community groups and which individuals. I did my homework a little bit differently. I think that when we are going into this discussion and we are all trying to decide what the listening is going to look like and what groups, what individuals, I think we also need to be very, shall we be cognizant and realistic that our community has not just been trying to talk to us, that they've been shouting to us and letting us know what they want that listening and what they want those community meetings to look like. So we've spent a lot of money, been on this board for six years plus, we've spent a lot of money on board governance. So I'm just, you know, I have very, very high expectations for this turning out to be a constructive exercise and not just another check the boxes. And I know before you say so that that's going to be our decision. So thank you.
Trustee Brooks, followed by trustee Zamora. I'm sorry, trustee Zamora, if you're in the queue too. Where are you in the queue? Okay, let's put you here after trustee Williams. Trustee Brooks?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to clarify before there's any confusion that this is not a new governance model. The board is still legally required to do things that are in NRS, like adopt a balanced budget, provide supervision of our one employee. Those don't go away. This isn't changing our governance policies. It's actually a set of practices that actually align with our existing policies already. So the ask is that we're supposed to be setting goals. We're supposed to be focused on monitoring them. That's already embedded in our policies. My question is about next steps. When we adopted this, when we talked about this timeline, we talked about this project, pretty impressive timeline. How is it possible for us to complete these tasks without some sort of delegation? So that a better baked plan when it comes to like organizing community events is a little bit more organized. Otherwise, we will wait like four weeks before we discuss this again. So in your opinion, AJ, is there an opportunity for some sort of delegation for some of these tasks?
Yeah, so two things. I appreciate your reflection on the idea of a model or not. We don't think of the work that we do as offering a model that suggests that there are pre-baked answers and we don't have those. We do have pre-designed questions, but you all have to come up with the answers yourself. And so we're happy to offer a student outcomes-focused approach to governing. But it's a, it's a framework to help you all be more intensely focused on what you desire, which is improving student outcomes. In terms of kind of what is it, you know, what does it look like for executing this? This is probably not something that the 11 of you can do of your own accord. And so fortunately, you have staff and there is a lot of work that you, we would recommend that you delegate to your staff rather than doing yourself. So for example, you all need to be the ones who decide when and where a meeting is and who the participants are and who the script is. But once you've made those decisions, we would encourage you to delegate to your staff the job of running all the logistics behind the scene to set that up and to do whatever public notice is necessary and all of those sort of things. So in the same way that you all have declared that there would be a meeting tonight, I suspect none of you were called upon to set up the room or to set up the sound system in the room or anything like that, that you have staff who supports you in that way. Think of it like that, that you all will say what needs to happen. But it is appropriate for you to all to have staff to support you in it. It's not appropriate to have staff supplant your leadership of it. And it's not appropriate to have staff replace you in doing, in doing the listening. You need to be the ones listening to your community and not placing your staff between you and your community. But the logistics of it and setting up all the operation, of the operational tasks that need to happen, we would definitely recommend all of that be done by your staff. So this will be a significant lift for them as well to handle those. But we, we work with the staff of many other districts just in the same way that we'll support you all in your piece of this work. We'll certainly support your staff in their piece of this work.
Trustee Zamora?
Thank you, Madam President. Speaking of delegation, actually, one of my questions, under the implementation timeline, there's a column, process owner, and I see that some of them say board president or implementation chair. And I'm wondering if this is part of like the delegation, like will you choose someone else? Maybe not one of the officers, but also expanding responsibilities for everyone else to be able to participate in this process.
That's a great idea, trustee Zamora. And we have not, we have not selected, I'd love volunteers, whether it's at this meeting or after this meeting, to see who would like to take on leadership role and support the implementation of this timeline. So don't make eye contact with me, I guess. I love, I believe, I believe that eye contact is pretty intense, trustee Zamora.
Yes, there's a tab that says community listening process planning, and it will assemble with sort, sort and kind of scheduled meetings, and I think that's part of what we were just discussing.
I love it.
So I think that's a great idea. I have another question though.
Yes, please.
Thank you. So being part of, one of the noes for this, one of my biggest concerns were how are we going to implement the Focus 2024? And the climate study we did where we spent a lot of money on that. And I feel like every time we talk about this training, we talk about this, it always gets brought up. And I think the question is, is there a way, I don't know if this is for AJ or you, President, where we can have a public, open discussion and kind of really breaking down how it's being implemented in this process? Because I think we just say it's being implemented. Yes, we have it. Yes, we're doing it. But I think personally, and I feel like others might need a full breakdown of exactly like, this is part of the climate study that they said we need to work on and how it's being implemented in this process and this timeline.
I'm happy. Go ahead, AJ.
So to give you an example from another district, let me remember which district it is so I get my facts straight on this. Okay, so I'm thinking about another district. As they started into this process, there were several reports that had recently been done that were filtered into their existing strategic plan work, but that they wanted the results of those reports, the findings, the recommendations to be carried over. And so what happened is when it was time to sit down as a board and set the goals and guardrails, in addition to the community listening work that they did specifically for that, they also had copies of those reports brought forward and used that as part of their discernment of identifying what were the key priorities that were going to drive the board's work going forward. And so I could imagine, this is what I meant earlier when I said that you all as a team will have to decide what artifacts, what previous listening has been done that you all deem important to carry forward. And we just bake that into the process. Now again, you all collectively would have to tell us which, if any documents those are. That's not a decision we can make and it's not a decision any one trustee can make. But certainly, you know, as a body corporate, if you all say these three documents need to be carry forward as part of our discernment, then we would respect that just like we did with the other district who had what sounds like a similar situation.
Trustee Zamora, I believe that AJ mentioned the artifacts being one of, and making the dot, can I come to dots here? That one of the artifacts that you're hoping is, is baked in, to use AJ's words, is the culture and climate study. And I've been taking note of that, and I believe AJ is too. When that moment comes up, we will definitely bring that up as an item where we incorporate it into the sessions, into the process moving forward. That is one piece. And the other parallel piece that I can't help but to think of is what progress have we made in the, in this culture and climate study? And actually, that is a note for me to come back and reflect on and provide an update to the board at some point in the future meeting. Thank you, thank you. Trustee, trustee Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, AJ, for bringing and presenting this to us. I remember when we looked at this timeline originally when we voted in this. And even then, my only concern is, as it is now, is how, I guess, because I get concerned about the overturn on this board and inside the district. How, I guess, do you anticipate what that looks like being that 2024 is an election cycle? And I would caution that to my fellow board members for us to be able to stay focused on this. And even if certain trustees are not on this board next cycle, as we've all discussed things, I guess, how, how AJ, do you think that looks going into a new cycle, going into 2025? Possibly having new trustees on the board? I guess I just, I would love to hear your thoughts on it.
Yeah, three critical points on this. One, that's directly to what you asked, but then two that really help bring it home. So first, your job as you conduct this listening and develop a set of priorities based on the community's vision and value is to be certain that the priorities that you adopt are in fact grounded in the community's vision and values. This is why the listening is so important. This is why you all going out, not kind of sitting on your high horse and listening from on high, but actually going out into the community and engaging with folks in a really authentic and holistic way is so important because it needs to be the community's priorities, not just the 11 of y'all's priorities. The moment that is true, just because an election has happened, doesn't mean that the community's voice is now suddenly invalid. And so if you all do your job authentically, then these aren't contingent on any one person. They're contingent on the community as a whole. And so that means if the next incarnation of the board wants to change them, so be it. But that incarnation of the board would then, it'd be incumbent upon them to go back out and reproduce the listening again because the priorities are derived authentically from the vision and values of the community. You don't simply alter them on a whim. You'd have to go back and do all the listening all over again. If the next board chooses to do that, then so be it. Most often what happens however is that's not the case, is that folks don't want to subject their community to a full intensive round of authentic listening every two years just because there's an election. But if they choose to, certainly that is their right as community representatives to declare that. In practice, we see that almost never. So that's one part of it. Two other parts though help breathe life into that. You need to go out and after you've adopted these priorities, it's your job to communicate results to your community. So it can't be, we came and listened to you and set priorities. You have an obligation to go back out on a recurring and regular basis to communicate with your community about, here's how we're doing relative to your priorities. So it's not enough to listen for the priorities and write them down. And it's not even enough to monitor them to make sure they're being enacted. You have an obligation to go back out and be in communication with your community at regular intervals so they understand where the school system is in regards to the priorities you've set. And then the third thing that I'd say that helps really bring life to this work is no one should serve on the board without having first received some type of training, some opportunity to understand what is the job of a school board member? If you all's experience has been anything like mine, I thought I knew what I was getting into when I ran for the school board. In reality, I did not. It wasn't until I got on the school board and frankly, a year and a half into it, that I really started to get a grasp on it. So the third critical piece of how do you make sure that you're giving life to community priorities that last and that survive multiple election cycles? Is make sure that before people even apply to run, that they've had an opportunity to receive training on, what does it look like to be on a board? That they understand why you have to listen to the community priorities, why you have to codify those into a set of goals and guardrails, and how you use those to create coherence. If someone is trained, then one of the things they understand that I didn't understand when I got on is that you do direct harm to your students and your staff if you were the board that changes direction every single year. Eventually, responsible staff will completely tune you out because your lack of competence is actually harmful to children. And so effective governance says, well, you're going to stay the course for some amount of time. But that's not well-known unless there's actually training that's available. And so that's the third critical step is helping people understand what is the role of governance so that they understand that it's actually harmful to staff and harmful to your students to switch directions every 12 months, every 24 months. It doesn't give staff time to execute. It doesn't create a stable learning environment for students. But unless you provide that training to the community, then it's reasonable to expect that your next set of trustees will be just as ignorant when they arrive as I was when I arrived. Those are the three things I would recommend.
Thank you, AJ. I really appreciate that answer. I think the third piece that you spoke on is probably more legislative than board dictated. But I do appreciate that this board at least has had multiple training sessions. When I got on the board in 2020, when we got our new board members just this past year, and then even in 2022, when we had new board members for that election cycle. So I appreciate your input. Thank you.
Trustee Bustamante?
Thank you, President Garcia Morales. AJ, I have some questions that we discussed in the officers' meeting. One particular one has to do with how, how we pair up to go out. So for example, I represent Henderson all the way down to Laughlin. I want to know if I am having a listening session in Laughlin, if my colleagues cannot join me, would it be seen, and I'm, I'm not running again, so I think it's appropriate for me to ask this, would it be seen as an election-type or a political-type listening session? Or can I go out by myself for that listening session with staff? Or is it something that we, we must coordinate in pairs?
Do you, to help me understand this, do you see your role as representing just the children who live in that part of the district? Or do you see your role as representing all children?
I see myself as representing all children, but I do not want the rurals to be, to feel like we're just, we are just focused in on, on Las Vegas alone.
Yeah, yes, certainly. And so because you see your role as representing all children, and I hope that your 10 colleagues feel the same way, because you see that as your role, that actually matches with what we believe as well, that each of you is morally accountable for every single child within your district, not just the ones who are politically affiliated with you. For that reason, that is why our recommendation is that every single one of you should be doing listening all across the county, that you shouldn't just be engaged in listening in your part of the county, that you should be in other places and there are going to be times ideally when there's listening happening in your part of the county and you're not there because you're often another part of the county conducting listening there and vice versa. And so it's absolutely important that if you're going to authentically try to represent the entire county, that you do listening in more than just the part of the county where you live. And so that's part of why the pairing up is so important is because then you and one, maybe two of your colleagues are in one corner of the county while another two or three of your colleagues are in another corner of the county. And between, and all of the information that you all hear is gathered and made publicly available. So it's not like there's going to be something that's said in one part that you won't have access to. But there is a value to each of you listening all across. And so sometimes what board members have a temptation to do is, well, I just want to hang out in my neighborhood. And so sometimes what board members have a temptation to do is, well, I just want to hang out in my neighborhood, and I don't want to hear, you know, what's going on in other places. We, we rebuke that. We, we don't actually think that sets you up to be successful at representing all children. And so that's why the recommendation that you actually all go out, go out in pairs, don't go out solo to your inquiry, don't go out solo, go out in pairs at minimum so that there's some accountability that the two, the two of us are paying attention and that we're agreeing that, yes, this is what we heard. And that also provides a protection for your community so that what is captured is as authentic a version of what was said that evening and is less likely to be intermingled with the opinions or the perspectives of one board member. Having multiple board members present helps ensure that you have as much clarity of community voice as possible.
Thank you. And then the, the questions that you keep referring to, have, have those been sent? Or, or are you waiting for something in order to send it to us so that we can, as a board, preview them and share? Because we want to get everyone's input on those questions. And in order to do that, we, we would like to see them, see if there are additional questions that the board wants to take a look at.
Yes, so the development of those is you all's task, not ours. And so we are waiting for, ideally, again, all 11 of you to complete the tasks that we've provided that allow you to brainstorm and provide that to us. And then once we've received that from all 11 of you, then we want to turn around and provide that back. And so there's a whole nother step in this where, again, you all are going through all that's been collected. But first, we're trying to wait to see if all 11 of you will provide input because we, we think that's important. Again, it's on you all. If you all decide, you know what, here's the cutoff, and if people choose to be a voice for their community, so be it. If they choose not to be, so be it. But we prefer that all 11 of you do. But that's the only thing that's holding this up, is we're waiting to hear back from all of y'all. And then it's normal that that's when we proceed. But again, if you all make the decision that we just need to have a clear cutoff date, and folks who choose to be community representatives in this way are in, and those who aren't or choose not to be, that you respect that and we move on without, then, you know, we're ready to go whenever you all are. Also, I noticed that Ben has joined us, and so I want to hand anything, anything I missed over to Ben because you all had a meeting with your officers the other day that Ben was at that I was not. Ben, take us away.
Yeah. Good evening. It's great to see all of you. I apologize for my tardiness. Excited to hear the conversation and, and work on this. I sent out emails today to individuals if we're still missing your individual feedback on that. And it's our hope that as soon as we receive those and we're able to turn around a draft reflection of what we heard, so you all can continue to move along in this process.
Thank you, thank you. I want to acknowledge that. So trustee Cabalso is in the queue, and I want to check. Oh, forgive me. Justine Barson's dropping in. Okay, very good. Justine Barson's dropping in. Go ahead.
Thank you, President Garcia Morales. So one last question, and, and it's not reflective. We have a room full of educators, and I'd like us to reflect so they can see the same document that I'm looking at. You perhaps have to go back one. On the timeline, there's a, a listing for, it's a bullet that says, Conduct Board Policy Diet. Could you just give us and enlighten us a little bit, and then I'll have a follow-up after that? So I know we want to wrap this up.
Yeah, so the idea of a board policy diet is policies typically tend to evolve over many years with many additions and do continue to grow one upon the other for a long time. And generally, in our, our experience, boards tend to add policies. They don't tend to reflect on those policies and see which ones may no longer be necessary or might be actively working against us or may not represent the direction of the district anymore. So when we say a board policy diet, that takes place after the school board has set the vision, the values, the goals and the guardrails, the district is moving forward through alignment. And so it is setting up a procedure for the board to review its current policies across the board and see which ones may not be applicable any longer and either sunset or remove or adjust with an eye towards alignment, towards the goals and guardrails that y'all are trying to accomplish.
Ben, thank you for that. I want to acknowledge because the day that we had the retreat was during a workday. So I'm going to assume teachers were doing their job. Thank you for that, and you were not watching the retreat. But I want to acknowledge a comment that you made, A.J. I think it's really powerful to keep in mind that you said, "Culture each strategy for lunch, breakfast, and dinner." And we, I think, have an opportunity to really listen to the community and really understand what that climate and culture is, and I think we will much later this evening. But I'm eager to do so, and I'm very much on board in being a part of the process. But I'm also going to say I will absolutely do my homework, and I did my homework. And I do want to follow up because there are some other questions I have based on some of the things that we shared tonight. Thank you.
Great, colleagues, thank you so much. We are, I want to just check in with my colleague, our colleague on the phone. Justine Watson, do you have any questions at this time?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam President. I was just wondering with Focus 2024, and you all did a listing tour at that time. I'm hoping, as trustee Zamar said, that we incorporate some of that into this student outcomes. But I also want to make sure that there's an evaluation still for our one employee, right? So when will that occur? Or has it already occurred? Or when was the last evaluation for the superintendent?
I'll take that, I'll take that line of questioning. Justine, justine Watson, in order for us to ensure that we know what we're measuring our superintendent on, we have to establish goals, which is part of the community, or first to have goals, we'll have to. We are choosing to go down the community listening route in order for us to do the community listening route with confirmation that everybody has completed assignments. So this is a part of the process, and our goal and expectation is to be able to evaluate a superintendent or superintendent with the goals that we establish as a result of the community listening meetings that, that from, from those sessions rise up the goals and the values and guardrails of our community.
So just to follow up, Madam President, when was his last evaluation?
Thank you, trustee, trustee Watson. I was getting confirmation from our colleagues in the room. It was in fall of 2022. Do you have any other questions?
Thank you, thank you.
Justine Brooks.
Thank you, Madam President. It seems, do we have any public comment on this?
Sometimes two or three times a year.
I'd like to make this my first and final warning to our audience. Of all are aware of the decorum, and this is a business meeting. And anybody who's seen interrupting a business meeting will be asked to leave. I don't want to go down that route. Really looking forward to moving on with our agenda. Justine Brooks.
Sorry, Madam President, was there any public comment? And are you looking for action in this item?
Forgive me, there is no public comment, there is no action on this item.
Okay, so this does not require adoption of the board?
That's correct.
Should we consider a deadline for anybody that hasn't completed their homework? And I'd like to have the team from the council weigh in on what the lead time is for them to complete that. Maybe we can aim for the eighth or something so that we can finalize something at the next meeting?
So in order for, justine Brooks, in order to hear, what I hear you saying is that in order for the council to complete their work, we have to have an internal deadline. Are you suggesting that be the seventh of February? Or are you suggesting that the report comes back to us by the seventh of February?
I would suggest that it comes back by February, by the eighth.
Understood. Council, what do you, A.J. and Ben, what do you, how much time do you need in order to develop this report?
Usually, it's a relatively quick turnaround. I think we could do it within a week after we get the full responses. So if everyone gets their responses in by early next week, that would give us the requisite amount of time. But, you know, it's a week from whenever the deadline is for people to complete. And I've had a number of people respond to emails already and schedule time to finish it out, and it shouldn't take that long. So I think it would be very helpful to set a timeline for when is going to be the cutoff internally for completing it, and then add a week, and we'll hopefully get it to you sooner, but I'll need at least a week to turn it around for sure.
Thank you, Ben. Go ahead.
Sorry, and if I may, and I'm not making a request on how you all decide to move tonight, but it is our general recommendation that the board eventually do adopt the implementation timeline because this is the work that you all are undertaking for your community. So whether that's tonight, whether that's another time. But that is a really important part of the process because at the end of the day, this is not our work, even though we are here to help you all every step of the way.
Thank you, Ben. It sounds like February 2nd would be the best date for us to internally, colleagues, to complete this assignment so that we can give Ben and A.J. and then be time to bring this back to us.
And I would, if I may, President, I, I would just offer my services to anyone. If it's helpful just to hop on a call individually or a Zoom call, I'm happy to talk to anyone through this, through, at your convenience.
Thank you, thank you. Really appreciate your time here tonight. And the questions from, thank you, colleagues, the questions that you offered today. We're going to now move on to item 4.05. This is an action item, and members of the audience who have not completed a yellow card but would like to speak on this item, please submit them now. Otherwise, once we begin this item, we will no longer be taking cards. Thank you. Very good. I am going to, item 4.05 is a public hearing on and possible approval of the new negotiated agreement of the 2023-25 and a memorandum of agreement between the Clark County School District and the Clark County Education Association. I'm going to turn it over, actually, before I turn it over to Mr. Hall, I'm going to turn it over to trustee Guzman.
Thank you, President Garcia Morales. I will be abstaining from this, even though I do not have any connection to the Clark County Education Association. Some of the members that belong to me will benefit from this contract.
Thank you, trustee Guzman. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Deputy Superintendent Larson Mitchell. The Nevada revised statute 288.153 requires that any new extended or modified collective bargaining agreement between a local government employer and an employee organization be approved by the governing bodies of local government at a public hearing and that the chief executive officer of the local government shall report to the local government the fiscal impact of the agreement. A tentative agreement has been reached regarding the 2023 through 2025 negotiated agreement between the Clark County School District or CCSD and the Clark County Education Association or CCEA. The tentative agreement extends most previous contract terms and includes the following changes. This is not exclusive. Definitions from Article 1 have been changed. Article 4, gravy, starvation procedures. Article 10, teacher advisory council. Article 26, professional compensation. Article 28, teachers' health trust. Article 20, public employees' retirement system or PERS. Article 35, transfer. Article 37, extra pay for extra duty schedules. And the addition of Article 41, which speaks to Senate Bill 231 funds for public employees' retirement system, hard to fill in special education positions. The 2023 through 2025 negotiated agreement has been reviewed, approved, and was ordered by an Harvard paper on December 20, 2023. CCSD and CCEA drafted the new negotiated agreement, which modifies the previous agreement approved by the board trustees on March 24, 2022. The new agreement includes, but is not limited to, the modification of the following terms. Salaries are raised by 10% in the first year and 8% in the second year. Employees receive a one-step advancement on the pre-salary schedule in each year. Effective July 1, 2023, CCSD will increase the health insurance contribution by $78.63. And effective July 1, 2024, CCSD will increase the health insurance contribution by $66.19. The contribution to the public employees' retirement system or PERS is increased by 1.875%. Extended gain extracurricular pay is modified to conform with the new pre-salary schedule, and the extra pay rate for instructional services is increased to $50 per hour from $31.50 per hour. The term of the agreement is extended for an additional two years or until July 30, 2025. Article 41 has been added to allocate SB 231 funds to special education, hard to fill positions, and to the public employees', public employees' retirement system. The terms of this agreement will be effective from the day of approval. And the total fiscal impact and change in the agreement is approximately $524 million, or excuse me, $524 million, $50,000. A fiscal impact analysis has been provided, which summarizes the expenditure. There is also an accompanying memorandum of agreement that is also to be discussed and is up for approval and for possible action, which corrects any errors to the salary schedule that was initially included in the 2023 through 2025 negotiated agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. We're going to begin with individuals who signed up in advance, then we'll move on to yellow cards, then we'll close the public hearing and seek motion for this item. Mr. Frazee, you're first, followed by Alyssa Bird. Oh, excuse me, I'm looking at the wrong list. Action item 4.05, Elizabeth Adler, Angie Joy, Michael John, and Jim Frazee. Up first.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Adler, and I am the ELL specialist at Sunrise Mountain High School and a proud executive board member of CCEA. I spoke at a board meeting on September 23 of 2021, and I asked the question, why do we always have to speak out and show how sad and angry we feel of board meetings when all we're asking for is what every other professional receives without hesitation? We can't even get what has been negotiated by the district. This is unacceptable. Well, here I am, two and a half years later, with the same question. We, once again, like many contracts prior, went through arbitration, even though the money was there from the beginning of this negotiation, thanks to the hard work and collaboration between CCEA, our educators, the legislature, and our governor. Our employees should be over and done with presenting their personal stories as school coordinating. We demonstrated that when you research the numbers, present data, look at revenue, and make projections for growth in both student enrollment and achievement and the economy, we don't have to pursue fights, but we rather win battles. One day, I would love to see CCSD fighting alongside our educators so we can focus on student achievement instead of petty nonsense published in the news. We should be able to show our students that when academic lessons are implemented in the real world, we prepare our arguments and we present them to decision-makers. We achieve, we win, and we all get ahead. But all too often, we're set up for disappointment. Luckily, we teach our students about resilience, and as educators, we must take each disappointment in context. I cannot accept that CCSD wants to approve two MOAs in the amounts of $21,400,000 and $4 million, respectively, before finalizing the contract for educators and school police. In addition, it appears that principals will be able to determine whether or not support staff will get an incentive and for which incremental amount. If this is a budgetary decision, doesn't the SOT have final input and vote? So now, support staff will be incentivized based on the ability of a school to pay based upon their budget with little or no impact. based upon their budget with little or no impact on student achievement. We, again, are considering handing out bonuses based on a school's pocketbook. I think it's fiscally irresponsible to allocate and approve incentives without understanding the guidelines and potential use of ELL or at-risk funding. How will CCSD ensure that these employees are serving the needs of ELL or at-risk students through their daily activities? It seems like just another scheme to spend taxpayers' money to feed those who have a contract but are still starving for equity. Thank you.
Followed by Michael and Jim.
Hello, school board trustee member and members of the public. My name is Angie Joy, and I'm a CCSD teacher. I see that you please confirm our new contract. For nearly a year, we have been working to secure a contract that would provide all teachers with a significant increase, not only to combat inflation, but also place qualified personnel in front of some of our immediate students. Teachers need this contract to go into effect as soon as possible. Many have struggled waiting on delayed step increases, column advances, and salary increases. For some strange reason, for the last four or so contracts, it has become standard for teachers to wait an extremely long time to receive their secured funds. Please put an end to this today and approve the contract that the arbitrator decided upon. This contract means a lot to me because I know the effort that went into it. I was the chair of the negotiations team, and I worked with a variety of fellow teachers to present a proposal for all teachers. Yes, many proposals were put forth, but we have consistently fought for all teachers to get 10% the first year and 8% the second year. Sadly, that was shot down by the district time and time again because they were sure they'd run out of funding in the future. But somehow, they still have found more money to give to the administrators' union and the support staff after their contracts were negotiated before ours, which is quite interesting. I say that to say that of all the proposals that CCSD put forward excluded someone. Every teacher here is deserving of an increase for the work that they do. Every student deserves to have a licensed educator leading the way, and this contract accomplishes that for us. Many will tell you that they missed out on thousands of dollars without a look back or proper placement based on education. Let me tell you the truth of that, and I welcome anyone to come and find me for a clearer understanding. This look back and salary placement was not going to be for everyone, less than 3%. And on the day that CCSD did decide to share more on this, they said they would determine the look back, and it would be a maximum of two steps. Of course, veteran educators deserve more than two steps. And everyone deserves the opportunity to discuss their placement, which we will continue to advocate for. But today, I ask you to approve this contract because all teachers benefit more than they ever have before in contract history. As transfer season opens, many schools with high vacancies have the opportunity to attract licensed educators based on this contract. We've come before you before, spoken with the legislature, the governor, protested, and rallied for this contract. Please take the time to give the thousands of educators that have diligently worked all year without a new contract the peace of mind that these substantial increases to salary and healthcare will bring. Thank you.
Michael Jones?
Hello, my name is Michael Dan, teacher at Centennial High School. I'm here today as a veteran teacher to speak in favor of the recent contract awarded through the legally binding arbitration process. By the way, I take exception to you indicating this agenda item is about approval of the negotiated agreement. Can't believe I have to tell you how to do your job. But you don't get to approve or disapprove of this agreement. According to Nevada Revised Statutes 288.217, you gave up that right when you declared impasse and began the arbitration process. The state, the agreement, is legally binding on all parties. It's done. You just read it into the record. I mention this because of the article you placed in your mouthpiece, the Las Vegas Sun, and the fact you've chosen to waste more taxpayer dollars that could have been spent on children on hiring a separate lawyer outside of the $600-an-hour ones in Florida for the negotiations that would probably tell you what you want to hear. Again, you tried this in 2018, and the judge actually shot you down. I know you think the law doesn't apply to you, and clearly, the courts, the legislature, the governor, and the people of Clark County had a different opinion. So yet again, we found ourselves having to fight a superintendent who clearly does not care for educators. In 2019, Governor Sisalak specifically allocated money for a 3% raise for teachers. This superintendent claimed he couldn't afford the raise and refused to pay. The governor had to come down here and intervene. Flash forward to 2023, and we had Governor Lombardo, the legislature, increase education funding by more than $2 billion. On top of that, the Majority Leader Cannonzaro and Speaker Yeager created SB 231 to allocate another $250 million specifically for raises. The political leadership in Nevada clearly understands what we need to do to improve the education system. Yet again, this superintendent cried poverty and claimed he couldn't pay. CCEA attempted to begin negotiations in March of 2023, so we'd have a contract before school started. Superintendent dragged us feeding, negotiating in bad faith, and deliberately went to the meeting with false stories designed to divide. In fact, his so-called look-back proposal, he stated about 20% of our veteran teachers were overpaid and should receive a reduction to help pay for others. Only ones that see the overpay is the superintendent and his cabinet. According to open books, CCSD's CFO was paid $462,000 in salary, total compensation benefits $639,000. He started in 2017, had $75,101 total compensation. Add an increase in pay over seven years of $387,000 or 516%. Yet 18% over two years is too much for the people who actually work with children? The governor of the whole state of Nevada only makes $143,000. Your priorities are horribly out of sync with the public. The superintendent even went so far as to have very condescending emails for students in an attempt to get them involved.
Your time is up. Thank you. Jim? Ladies and gentlemen, we have, after Jim, we have Kenny Bellnap, Danny Price, Greta Blunt-Johnson, and Jessica Jones.
Thank you, Madam President, trustees, distinguished colleagues in the audience. My name is Jim Frazee. I have the pleasure of being an educator. I have the honor of being vice president of CCEA. Ten months. Ten months is how long it has taken to do a simple contract. But 10 months was not how long it took to get this contract. It took years to get the funding for this contract. The 10-month part should have been the easiest part. But I have great reservations that some of you still want to fight, even though this is a done deal. Even the timing of this meeting, knowing that you had dozens of educators that wanted to speak to this and had to get out to talk to our children, teach our children tomorrow morning, you scheduled us last. But we've come to expect that from some people. We are not valued colleagues. We are not respected. We have hired help, and again, you showed that tonight. Someone asked me about being a veteran educator and how I could take new teachers coming in, making the same salary or more. And I think back to my time at Citibank, when I was training some people and I found out they were making more than I was, and they were coming in, and I'd spent years of service and the anger and the madness. But I was told very quickly that we need new talent. What makes me even angrier than that is to think that tens of thousands of our children don't have a licensed educator that are going to greet them tomorrow morning. We need people to come to this district. Our elementary school teachers are so overwhelmed by class sizes, not to mention high school, that this has to end. This contract is an incredible contract. I will tell you flat out, it is the highest amount of money given this year in the country, not LA Unified, not Portland. And next time that you spend a dozen people down to Miami, they might actually have something to to attract some people with. This is a good thing. All stories are personal, so let me share mine. I am 62. God has granted me a really great gift. I am now the legal guardian of a 16-year-old. I look after my 94, soon to be 95-year-old mother. These are blessings, but they're expensive blessings. I work two jobs. Some days, I am gone 13 hours a day. And I don't complain, and I don't ask you to feel sorry for me. I am not the exception. I'm the norm. There are thousands of educators across this valley that have to work two jobs or more just to survive. This has to end, and I'm asking you to do the right thing tonight. I thank you for your time.
Kenny, come on up. And the colleagues, if I can please ask members of the, who are, if I can please ask individuals who sent up public comments to just be ready. Cue after Kenny, Danny Price, Greta Blunt-Johnson, and Jessica Jones.
Good evening, trustees. For the record, my name is Kenny Bellnap. I'm a 10-year veteran of the Clark County School District. I'm a product of this school district. I spent all my life in Southern Nevada, and I have the honor of serving on the CCEA Executive Board as their treasurer. This contract that is in front of you tonight did not start 10 months ago when we started negotiating. It started in Carson City, and the members of CCEA understand this, that negotiations start in Carson. We have to go and deliver to make sure that there's funding so that there are teachers in these classrooms to take care of the kids that so many of you up there opine that you care about. But you turn your back on educators time and time again. It's maddening. It's so frustrating beyond point. I've been in this district for 10 years. Four out of five contracts have gone to arbitration. You don't care about educators. It's pathetic. It's frustrating. And I don't know why anyone comes to Southern Nevada to work for people like you. I'm here to speak in support of the historic contract and life-changing money for these educators, the 16,000-plus that stick it out every day who work here in Southern Nevada and call it home. This contract is a direct result of the hard work and dedication of countless CCEA members. Without their work, the dues they pay every month, this contract would have never happened. Because it wasn't CCSD advocating for more money, it wasn't the administrators advocating for more money. It wasn't NSCA or the support staff up there doing it. It was CCEA who delivered. Who delivered $2.5 billion into this education system to allow us to improve our education system. It wasn't easily won either. This fight lasted almost nine months, unnecessarily because we have a superintendent more interested in dragging out this ordeal and inflicting as much pain on educators as possible instead of addressing the crippling issues facing our district. And don't forget, while we sit here tonight, 30,000 kids will go to school tomorrow without a licensed educator in front of them. 30,000. This contract will go a long way to address these crippling issues. Every educator in this district will see at least a 24% raise when taking into consideration steps and the restoration of PERS. Will this contract fix everything in CCSD? Absolutely not. But it will make it easier for our educators to be able to buy homes in the communities that they live in, allow them much-needed relief from the crippling inflation that we've experienced, and fund their healthcare finally, so not a dollar of these new raises will go to healthcare, and they can live their lives. This contract is a culmination of teachers, OLPs, parents, students, state leaders, and countless community allies coming together to support our frontline educators. So for those in our community who showed up for educators, when our local officials turned their back on us, I thank you, and I hope you do the right thing.
Danny Price, followed by Brad Blunt-Jones, then Jessica Jones.
Good evening. My name is Dan Price. I'm a CTE teacher at Sunrise Mountain High School and a proud executive board member of CCEA, representing C2A. My concern this evening is around the issue of accountability. Once again, CCSD has demonstrated that they cannot be held accountable for controlling the historic education budget. They cannot meet deadlines, the most recent with the finance, the interim finance committee. They cannot manage contracts, payroll, or communication to employees that have direct fiscal impact on everyone who works for CCSD. We constantly talk about recruitment, retention of administrators, educators, support staff, school police, who, by the way, still do not have a contract. In addition, before offering a contract to our police officers and finalizing a contract with the educators, you have the nerve to create and present MOAs and reopen contracts to provide more money to two bargaining units. Why? Isn't the role of bargaining units during negotiations? Does the district not feel that the contracts the both sides agree to were fair? You need to exercise the same accountability and tie compensation with outcomes. Throwing money at a problem does not result in gains and higher levels of satisfaction while absolutely ignoring and neglecting 16,000-plus educational professionals and hundreds of police officers that ensure our kids are safe and taught every day. Up in the board of trustees, justify this. And how can our community accept this treatment of the people who care for their children? The arbitrary nature that CCSD chooses to allocate or not allocate taxpayers' money to employees is unacceptable. I urge you to pass this tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Greta Blunt-Johnson. I'm a special education teacher at Pinchman High School. I've been teaching with the district for 15 and a half years. I want to give you some points, about 10 points, on why you should pass the budget tonight, without any further discussion. One, you're investing in our teachers. It's an investment in the future of education. Two, a fair contract for teachers is a commitment of excellence in our schools. Three, quality education starts with valuing and supporting our educators. It's time to approve a contract that recognizes our hard work. Four, our teachers inspire. We educate. We shape the leaders for tomorrow. A strong contract for teachers is an investment in the success of our students. Let's make education a priority. The backbone of our education system is a well-supported teaching staff. Let's build a strong foundation with a contract that reflects our work. Please pass the contract. Quality education requires commitment to retaining and attracting the best teachers. Let's approve a contract that ensures our schools remain a beacon of excellence. Nine, fair compensation and working conditions for teachers pave the way for brighter educational future. Let's pass this contract that values our dedication. Lastly, a vote for this historic contract is a vote for a thriving education system, empowered educators, and successful students. Let's make history together. Thank you.
Madam President, members of the board, deputy superintendent, I want to start off by saying it's really wonderful to see so many new members on the board, all of which I know and are great advocates in our community. For the record, my name is Jessica Jones. For the last eight years, I have taught predominantly kindergarten on the east side of Las Vegas. I also have the pleasure of serving as the secretary of the Clark County Education Association. We knew that after the legislature passed this historic education budget, that there was never a question of if the money was there. We knew going into bargaining what it was. This school year, we started with at least 30,000 children without a licensed educator in the classroom. The district described our contract proposal as both unaffordable and budget busting and dragged us out longer than it should have been. In the process, we lost more than 300 educators in the district between August and December, meaning that there are now more kids in the district sitting in classrooms without a licensed educator. And I'm going to get off my feet for a minute. I was looking at separations while sitting here. And a teacher who I worked with, that I mentored, that was in my school, that was wonderful with children, is now one of these separated teachers, and I messaged her, and I'm like, what's going on? Are you okay? And she said, no, I'm not okay. I don't want to do this anymore. So now we have more children sitting without a licensed educator, and it's shameful. I am very thankful for the work of educators that we put into securing for this historic contract for this district. We're getting so much money, so much things that are going to do life-changing things for people working here at the moment because educators have been struggling. Many educators have been forced to take second jobs. Many educators have been forced to take second jobs. I know educators that drive Uber Eats, take out payday loans, and even donate plasma because they cannot pay their bills because this district spent nearly a year during skyrocketing inflation, dragging educators through one of the most disturbing and unnecessary contract fights I have ever seen in my entire 38 years of living in Clark County. I want to thank every single educator. I have seen all of you at many events because you stood up for yourselves and you fought for this phenomenal contract. And it is very deserving and very necessary. I want to thank CCA and our members because we are now competitive with the Western United States, which is very important to help filling these positions to get educators in front of these 30,000 children that don't have a classroom teacher. I sat and listened to this entire mouse presentation and I'm looking Title I, E L. All of these are my kids. We have 10 vacancies on my school that we cannot fill because there are no educators. It is sad. Egos of people in power in this district and CTSK, including certain elected sitting up in front of me right now, have cost children educators and their education and they cannot get that back. Thank you all you.
Alyssa Bird, Victor Romero, Carl Bird. Aramis Bakayao.
Aramis Bakayao.
Bakayao. Bakayao. Thank you.
Alyssa Bird, John F. Miller School. So many things to say and so little time to say them, so I will try to keep it short. Number one, thank you, CCEA employees, Executive Board, members, and our negotiations team, our students, families, and community members for fighting for all educators and working hard to get us this historic contract. Number two, to you, the board, Dr. Jara, who's not here, and the CCSD negotiations team, it should not have taken this long. It should not have gone this far. After being an educator in this district for over 20 years, it's sad to say that this is the most toxic work environment the district has ever been. And it starts at the top. It starts with you. Number three, the $5,000 base pay incentive for special education teachers needs to be for all licensed educators in that category. Our SEES, our Special Education Instruction Facilitators, should be included in that special education incentive. They are licensed educators that support classroom special education teachers, manage caseloads, and keep IEPs compliant. They are just as important in the special education realm as classroom teachers. The incentive for Title I schools with 5% vacancies needs to be for all licensed educators at those schools. This includes strategists who support classroom teachers, cover classes all of the time, and our instructional coaches. This includes counselors, therapists, psychologists, nurses that support our students and classroom teachers. We are a team. We do the job of educating our students together. You continue to have this culture of pitting employees against each other. New teachers versus veteran teachers, classroom teachers versus other licensed educators, strategists, SEES, et cetera. Once again, it has created a toxic culture in CCSD. Without a change in the climate and culture from the very top of our district, you guys, nothing in this district will change. Schools will continue to have vacancies, leaving students without the instruction they need and deserve. I would like to note that today is our payday and we have yet to see our pay increase, but I still had to pay my bills. Now that licensed educators have our legally binding contract, our arbitrator approved contract, six months later, more than halfway into the school year, it is time for you, as the leaders of our district, to repair the relationships you have burned with educators so we can all come together for our students and for the mental health of our educators. Especially because we get to do this all over again in about a year.
President. Okay, Madam President, trustees, and everybody else, how are you doing? So my name is Victor Romero. I'm a, I work at Desert Mines High School. I'm a self-contained special education teacher. I also teach dual credit and I'm part-time instructor at Nevada State College. As teachers, we're taught to self-reflect. Okay, it's one of the key tenements of our profession is to be self-reflective. And this, I am, oh, I'm on the CCA Executive Board as well. Okay. So as I reflect through these past months where we sacrifice our time, our mental health sometimes, and everything, I want to share with you the profound moment that I had with this student. Okay, so they saw us. They saw us advocating. We wanted them to advocate. I was like, we're advocating, you need to advocate for yourself. It's the dual credit students I work with might become teachers and I'm hoping they choose that path. We had these three day rallies. People saw me on the news. They saw me on the news. And one of them asked me, it was in front of the class, like, why are you doing this? And I said to him, because of you. At Desert Mines High School, we have the highest vacancies in the district. We have the highest teacher turnover rate. I've been there for 10 years. Programs can't withstand that. I created programs and they've gone because my colleagues are gone. And so I told that, I told that student and I said, you deserved to have the same teachers in your building for all four years. And you didn't get that. And you know what? I want those kids that come up to get that. And that's what this contract does. $5,000 for Title I? Oh my God. An incentive to stay in that building? That's profound. That can change Nevada education. That can help my kids and that's all I care about. I am one of these masters plus 32 people. I am one of those people that probably would get a profound pay raise, but I don't care. And that's what this contract is about. This contract, we stated the entire time, this is about we, not me. And in that life of we, not me, I want to share stories. I asked my colleagues at Desert Mines High School, what this pay raise means to you. So I'm going to just read these, okay? As a new teacher and a new mom, the pay raise we just got gives me a sense of security for me and my family. As a special education teacher, I feel like we do so much. It can be very stressful with large caseloads. I'm going to skip, okay? So that's one. This pay raise means that I can actually afford to get married. This raise will allow me to drive Uber less so that I can spend more time with my oldest before he goes to college. I spent the past years working so much that I feel like I've missed some of the most important moments in his life.
Thank you, Victor. That's your time. Carl?
Carl, thank you.
Madam President, Members of the Board of Trustees, and obviously we do not have tonight Superintendent Jara, but I hope somewhere he'll be able to hear this. My name, for the record, is Carl Bird. I am a social studies teacher at K. O. Coniston Middle School, the Academy of Arts and Technology, and a very proud member of the Clark County Education Association. I want to discuss briefly the impact that the recent arbitrator's decision has on educators and students at my school. Educators are happy that the arbitrator's decision is final, binding, and it was the right decision. They are happy that our contract proposal was upheld and our new salaries will reflect the greater respect that educators have so long desired, which during the process was supported by the Nevada Legislature, the business community, parents, and students. Our, our staff was happy that CCEA went to Carson City with a focus on teacher vacancy and was able to secure an historic sum of money for salaries that reached beyond the classroom, leading to salary increases, oh, by the way, for admin and our support staff. We're not very selfish. Students were very happy with the decision because they want a quality educator in the classroom. But also those who are aspiring to become future educators want to note today that the state and CCSD are serious about improving the teaching profession, including salaries which are commensurate with other school districts across the country. They now see that we can compete with other school districts and that was very attractive to them. This means that many of them might take a greater interest in becoming an educator. I had a close on that, but I wanted to direct my final comment to our Madam President. In the New Testament, the shortest verse is Jesus wept. I remember being at the trustee meeting the last time we had an agreement. It was meant almost 12 o'clock at night. On the way out, my colleagues, we just couldn't believe this. All this work we do. I came home, ate dinner by myself. My wife was sleeping. She wasn't going to stay up for this. And I wept. I only asked my sister, how much have you wept? For the 18,000 educators and the children? Maybe you have. I hope that that feeling resonates tonight and you do the right thing. Thank you.
Aramis. Followed by Michael Stanley. Excuse me, Michael Pichaka, Stanley Wills, and Gab, copy and write there.
Hi, it's me again. I'm the one that you arrested. The one that you tried to intimidate and harass and defame. And I stand before you. My name is Aramis Bakayao. I am a teacher at Becker Middle School. I came to CCSD with 30 years of experience and this is my eighth year here. I'm thinking just a minute ago of my father, may he rest in peace, who when I told him I wanted to be a teacher, he said, why? We are immigrants. I was born in Cuba. We are political refugees and for religious reasons as well. My mother was a hardcore Presbyterian. We came to this country for the American dream, the first person in my family to go to college. My father said, why? Teachers are not respected in this country. Why would you want to become a teacher? Become a lawyer, become a doctor, don't become a teacher. I said, I want to become a teacher because I want to make a difference in the lives of children. I'm originally a teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing. I went to church all the time and I felt in my heart that I wanted to make a difference. I wanted to give back to the community. I've worked in a lot of schools. I love to move around and travel. I've worked all over the United States. I've worked in Africa, in Asia, in Eastern Europe, all over. The only place that I have not liked working for is this district. And I ask you to take a look in the mirror and reflect on what you are doing to educators and to children. Of course, we're fighting for money because we need to survive. But we are doing this for children. We care about children. Do you care about children? I told myself I wouldn't say this, but you need to look in the mirror. Some of you, not all of you, some of you are horrible garbage people.
Yes, Aramis, you know the drill. Ladies and gentlemen, I've asked you, your time is not personal. I might use.
Board President, City Trustees, my name is Michael Picard. I am one of five fourth grade teachers at Dick and Al elementary school. I've been with CCSD since 1999. I have been an educator for 29 years. You will sign a historical document for CCSD's educational system tonight. I have yet to find a school district in this nation that has signed a document that benefits students and teachers in the way that this contract does. Students will benefit from the raise in the starting salary. That salary will attract more teachers away from states with a higher cost of living and from states that do not offer a starting salary that is as high. These new teachers will find the thousand, will fill the thousands of vacancies now filled with full-time substitutes. Some vacancies continue to be filled by teachers who must sell their preps and lose precious planning time. So this is a win for CCSD students. It is a win for veteran educators like myself in two ways. I will bring more money to my home for my family and my final three years will raise my purse pension. This is very meaningful to me since I am quickly approaching retirement. As you turn the pages to sign this contract, I hope you will also look at it as turning the page to the relationship we have as employees and employer. It has been a rough and rocky road these past years. It has been made very clear to the Las Vegas community that the two groups of adults who are responsible for their children's education are not working as a team. And it is leadership that creates this team. And in my opinion, this team acts more as saboteurs of public education than as advocates by reading posts on the X that are anti-public education. The state legislature leaders have asked the City Superintendent to resign from this position. It is obvious to me in the community that there needs to be someone to lead these two parties. It is clear to me in the community that we need to be a cohesive team working for the benefit of their children. Politics, politics needs to be set aside or else more of the future, future generations will suffer. In the past five years, I've seen educators leave the district due to their personal pay schedules. They simply could not afford to live. So the students on their roster were placed online overcrowded in my classroom. We all know that this is not what science tells us works in the classroom environment. In closing, I would like to see this contract retain teachers, bring in new educators, and be a path traveled working together as a team for students instead of the divisiveness on public display during this contract negotiation. Thank you.
Madam President and Members of the Board. My name is Stan Willis. I'm a 26-year veteran of the Clark County School District. And in that time, I've taught at three high schools, Mohave, Valley, and now Arbor View. We find ourselves in the midst of an unprecedented teacher shortage, a shortage so acute that thousands in the students, thousands of students in the district, 30,000, have substitutes as their regular teachers. Title I schools have it the hardest, though it's marginally better elsewhere. Now, I'm not knocking substitutes. They have a purpose. But their purpose is to spell fully licensed teachers. Substitutes used to be available just a decade ago. I could put in for a substitute and expect that substitute would be assigned. That is no longer the case. Even in the more affluent area that I teach now, it's almost like you have to know somebody to get a substitute. Because classrooms cannot be left unsupervised, teachers have to pick up the slack. Just go into a school building in the morning before classes begin, you'll likely hear a voice on the intercom begging teachers to cover classes. On Fridays and Mondays and on weekends and major holidays, it is way worse. This means that teachers have to give up valuable preparation time to cover classes. It wears teachers out. It limits our efficiency. I'm not aware of the experts have studied the detrimental effect on student learning that this loss of preparation time represents. But I am beguiled by hope. The contract before the board represents an ambitious first step to improve the teacher pipeline. The agreement which we have anticipated now for a long time will go a long way in attracting and retaining teachers. A 10% raise for all teachers is equitable. It's the biggest pay raise in my 26 years. And I implore the board to act quickly. Thank you.
Evening. My name is Gabe Reliter and I'm married to a teacher. I think you'll hear from her shortly. She She works her butt off as a teacher, and she doesn't just teach for the paycheck, but she deserves to be treated fairly. The paycheck is necessary for us to pay our bills. And we were encouraged by the news of the contract. It is a step in the right direction, a raise for teachers. But it has pay scales that make it hard to swallow for many veteran teachers. Many veteran teachers have not been placed properly on the scale. This applies to those had recently, as well as, and perhaps especially, as many longtime teachers. This occurred in part due to pay freezes that occurred during recessions. This contract will now pay new teachers who are hired, in some cases, tens of thousands more than many veteran teachers who are already here with the same experience and education. I don't believe that the arbitrator made a specific finding that that was required, that it was required with these pay scales to pay those veteran teachers thousands and thousands of dollars less than newly hired teachers. I think that that was something that has been negotiated between CCEA and CCSD. And I don't think that's appropriate. It's not about me, we, or anybody else. It's about being treated with respect. And when you see that somebody is coming on after you with the same credentials as my wife will make a hundred and six thousand dollars per year, starting next month, whereas she will make seventy-seven thousand dollars, almost thirty thousand dollars difference, that is a slap in the face. And CCSD and Dr. Jarg, who I wish was here tonight, he blames, I emailed him multiple times about this, but whatever, he blames CCEA, CCEA blames CCSD. All I know is that me and my wife were caught in the middle. It is a complete slap in the face to pay veteran teachers tens of thousands of dollars less. And I know it's a foregone conclusion what's going to happen. And I'm not saying that the contract's entirely bad. Teachers deserve a significant raise, which at least this accomplishes for many. But we can't overlook that there are going to be veteran teachers who are really paid tens of thousands, not a few thousand, tens of thousands. And they talk about the PTSD system, which is great. It would take my wife three more column changes. She's, she's already earned three. Three more column changes at two hundred and twenty-five contracting hours, it's like six hundred and seventy-five extra hours beyond the fifty-hour weeks that she already does to even come close to what she should already earn now with this contract. That simply is not fair. So what I'm asking you to do, I know this is a foregone conclusion tonight, find a way to fix this particular issue. This has to be something that you can solve with CCEA and CCSD. Treat veteran teachers fairly. Thank you.
Leonard? Leonard Laiter?
That's my brother. He's not here.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, that's, that's all the individuals who signed up in advance. We're gonna move on to yellow cards. And I'm gonna read off a couple at a time so that after one of them is done, they can line up behind the comment table to be prepared to provide comments. Julius Mannix, followed by Michael Pichota, and Monica Bryant.
Good evening, Madam President and Town Trustees. My name is Julius Mannix for the record, and I'd like to address this contract that you're looking at today. Lack of CCAA educators and I traveled to Carson City to seek more funding for Nevada's education, leading to an substantial investment. In August, I witnessed my colleagues protest here urging CCSD to negotiate our contract. Sadly, they faced mockery, intimidation, and arrest while exercising their First Amendment rights to freedom of speech. In December, we got good news. Our, the arbitrator finally settled our contract. The historic raises in back pay afforded my family the opportunity to purchase our first home, a big milestone for us. Just yesterday, our offer was accepted. I want to emphasize that my wife and I are both CCSD teachers, and your decision today will significantly impact all the income supporting my household. Without these long overdue raises, we are afraid that homeownership may no longer be possible. I urge you to vote in favor of approving our contract today. While we are just two educators, all eighteen thousand of us are real people facing real challenges. I sincerely hope you choose to do what is right by your educators and our families and avoid jeopardizing our livelihoods. Thank you.
It's Michael present. Monica? I'm sorry, they're not present. Thank you. Doug Self, followed by Matt Elliott, and then Julius, I already had you, we've already heard you, so I'm gonna move your card. Also, Doug is Doug present, followed by Matt Elliott and Matt Dorado.
All right, okay. Board, Madam President and Deputy Secretary. I was here at the last board meeting and I spoke about the contract. And it's the issue about the veteran teachers. I'll talk specifically about me again. You heard my numbers, but let's quickly go on again. I ended up earning a master's. I took a year off from teaching and I earned a master's in education, of course. I came back, the contract says that since I came back within three years, I was placed back on the same step and column, therefore not getting credit for my masters. Now, if I had, that is a column advancement worth six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. A new hire teacher coming in actually gets three columns, which is eighteen thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty dollars. I'm currently working on my second master's, which I'm probably gonna finish later this year, which for me, it would be one more column advancement, which would be six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Once again, a new hire will end up getting three column advancements, which is eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars more. If you combine those two numbers, that's thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. That's fifty-nine percent of my current pay right now. So, since the last board meeting, what I have actually done is I've started interviewing. And I've interviewed a charter school. I'm close to getting an offer to charter school. I will be making about two thousand dollars more than this one specific charter school next year than I would with CCSD, specifically because they are recognizing that I have a master's and giving me credit for my master's for my pay. So my plan is to, is to leave CCSD for several years. I don't know, three, four, five, and then at some point come back. When I shared with you last time, I had sixteen years remaining. If I come back with thirteen years remaining, that is five hundred thousand dollars more I will get over my remaining thirteen years. So it's, I know it can't be done with this contract, but I sincerely hope at some point CCA, CCSD, you guys can come together and solve these inequities that we currently have for veteran teachers in the contract. So with that, I'll probably see you guys in about three or four years.
It's Doug present.
That was me.
Oh, forgive me, sorry.
I'll talk again.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you. Matt Elliott? It's Matt present. Matt Dorado?
Totaro?
Totaro, Matt Totaro. Thank you, Matt. Followed by Kristen Nigent.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, senior administration. Are you guys as hot as, as hot as I am? And I mean, temperature-wise, not looks. Just to share my personal story, I'm a twenty-two-year veteran of CCSD. I teach science at Northwest Corritech. But I was seven and a half years as a student. I'm a product of CCSD and I volunteered with the American Order within CCSD as well. So I have over thirty-one years with the district. My younger sister's a nineteen-year veteran. She teaches elementary sped, CCSD. My niece teaches at a larger middle school. So we're all CCSD products and we're part of the CCSD family. We're a CCSD family. So what does this money and this contract mean for me? My seventy-seven-year-old dad, he has end-stage kidney disease. He requires dialysis three times a week. My seventy-two-year-old mother has osteoporosis and I care for them both. They live in, Italian-American, that's just how we do it. For my niece, who just started teaching, she could now potentially afford to buy a new car so she can get to work. And for the teachers at my school, I'm the CCAA rep for my school. There's a lady who came to the United States from Croatia, ten-year veteran. She's making fifty-three thousand dollars. She has two kids. Her husband's unemployed. She can't afford her companies and can't afford the deductibles. And she cries during my prep every two, three weeks. There's another teacher at my school, can't afford to buy a new home. You know, the loan that he was gonna get or plans on getting is dependent upon the money here. So the last year and a half, this, and this, I just want to end with this, the last year and a half has been the worst vitriol that I've ever seen, you know, in my twenty-two years as a district. By finalizing this deal, this allows us to heal individually and it allows us to heal collectively and we can move forward. And so I ask that you please do that for the entire community and remove this veil of doubt and uncertainty. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Kristen is not here?
I'm here, don't worry.
I'm on two.
All right. Um, good evening, Madam President and members of the board. My name is Kristin Nygro. I am a ten-year veteran with CCSD as well as an executive board member for the Clark County Education Association. I'm here today to speak in support of this historic contract as well as my utter disappointment and frustration with this recent contract fight. We all love the issues that are plaguing CCSD at the moment. Lack of licensed educators in the classroom, students not in life, mental health crisis. It's just a revolving door of good educators, which is really sad. And CCEA members took their concerns up to Carson City. And they advocated for all of the people down here, all over the state of Nevada. And we finally got historic funding. And CCSD has the opportunity to do the right thing. Instead of ensuring that our students have a licensed educator in front of them, CCSD told educators that we are fiscally irresponsible to ask for such money. This turned in to a ten-month struggle that got ugly at times, especially when CCSD had two of their valued employees arrested at a board meeting because of their fierce advocacy for eighteen thousand-plus educators. Artemis. That was, by far, one of the most interesting and bizarre moments of my career here, and I've had many because I teach kindergarten. December, we finally got a tentative agreement, and now it's almost February. We're still educators. They're at the breaking point and as well, getting ready to financially go under. Remember we were talking about the people driving Uber Eats? I'm one of them. That's disgusting. I have a master's degree. I'm smart. I know I joke around a lot, but I'm very, very educated and I'm out there driving Uber Eats. I don't know why. We are educators. We dedicate our lives to shaping the minds of the future generation. The entire community is behind us. I have heard that at the grocery store when I walked in there with my CCEA shirt. They're like, oh, my God. Man, you guys are great. I hope you get everything you ask for. And we did. They see our blood, sweat, and tears. They understand that we're not asking for handouts. We're asking to be fairly compensated so we can stay in Clark County and teach the kids we want to teach. That's why we're here. It's not because we're greedy. It's because we wanna be here. So, in closing, this contract is a huge win for us. So I'm hoping you guys, you know, take this as a lesson and just really be like, you know, it's time to heal. I really do hope you do that. And also, Artemis, I'm thrilled that your case was dropped. I love that. I hope to get that same news on Monday when they go in.
Rebecca, Rebecca Laiter? After Rebecca, we have Tracy Mitchell.
Prestige members of the board. My name is Rebecca Laiter, and I'm a high school teacher of world languages here in CCSD. I want to represent the busy teachers, many of whom are home grading papers right now or on campuses, including athletic activities as we speak. It is amazing to me that CCSD has again drafted a contract for teachers which is so detrimental to the overall esteem and respect of veteran teachers, not to mention compensation. The newly proposed contract does not pay teachers in an equitable fashion for similar skills and experience. Once again, a contract has been drafted which favors the newcomers and the old-timers who are nearing retirement. However, the contract disrespects and undermines the work and development and years of experience of its own longtime workforce who are in the middle of their career. It is not admirable to me that veteran teachers who have worked so long and hard for this district are now put down in such a disrespectful manner. The teachers of our district are surrendering their time, energy, unfortunately their physical health, sometimes their mental health for the sake of their lessons, grades, students, exams, student learning goals, professional learning communities, et cetera. We adopt and learn the new tier-one instructional materials that we are given. We adopt the new policies and goals of our district each year in attempts to meet our school improvement goals and augment student achievement. Why then is it acceptable for a contract which is purported to support teachers to pay its own CCSD veteran teachers so much less than they will pay any newly hired teacher arriving with identical credentials beginning on January thirty-first? I have seen the proposed plans and studied the numbers. Teachers who will be hired on January thirty-first with my same credentials will be paid twenty-eight thousand dollars more than me. This new contract favors greatly the strangers coming to Clark County to teach our children. I have taught for this district for sixteen years. I have two master's degrees, a graduate certificate in that, and sixteen semester hours of postgraduate coursework in addition to these, all tied to the subjects that I teach. I have worked for this district, teaching its children, leading my department on my school SOT and AP cadre leader, working endlessly to develop my craft and my person, to serve ever better in this district. However, CCSD is choosing to not honor my sacrifice and effort, but rather to devalue my development and all that I have become in their service. I have gathered my CUs. I have burned the midnight oil, gaining my column changes at the fastest rate possible since the inception of the column system seven and a half years ago. I have done everything in my power to advance myself. But this new contract is devaluing me and those who are like me. It feels like disrespect. This contract must continue to undergo scrutiny even if it is signed into place. I understand the expectation that this contract will be supported tonight, but I hope that you all realize that there are grossly unfair portions of this contract which must still be fixed even after its signing and cannot be considered a done deal or a fair document moving forward. Equal pay for equally qualified workers. Thank you for your time.
Hi, good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Deputy Deputy Superintendent Marson Mitchell. My name is Tracy Mitchell for the record, and I do work at Eldorado High School, Mojah, I'm sorry, Eldorado High School, Monaco Middle School, and Sunrise Mountain High School. I'm honored to be a part of the speech language therapy services department. And at this time, I would like to express my gratitude for the CCEA for working tirelessly for months on this contract. It's very well deserved that we actually were able to get the contract approved. I know that my union dues were well invested. With ever increasing inflation, the astronomical cost of living, and the critical labor shortage in the speech department, speech language pathologists, they have caseloads that are actually above the Nevada, whatever the Nevada law allows. We individually made the decision to put students first, and I commend CCEA for their tireless efforts in this. With my current CCSD salary, it became pretty difficult for me to take care of my own family. I had to get a second job just to begin my. This eighteen percent raise over two years will allow myself and my colleagues to resign from our second, sometimes third jobs. Now we get enough sleep to have enough energy to work, spend time with our families, and afford the basic essentials in life. The raise are, excuse me, the raise is gonna allow the SOPs and other licensed professionals and teachers to live independently with less stress of the burden of having to work two or three jobs. With the higher pay, I'm hopeful that the speech department will finally be able to attract and retain highly qualified speech language therapists and lower our caseloads and take a lot of pressure off of myself. I actually have a caseload of seventy-one students, which is quite a bit. My children, my own children, they participate in sports and other extracurricular activities that require a lot of money. With the raise, I'll be able to afford their uniforms, their shoes, and other equipment without having that stuff donated to me. The entire process has been very physical. The entire process has been very physically and mentally draining while working two jobs, being a full time parent and giving more than what I have to the students at the school. I would love to be able to spend that extra time with my family. The raise will not only improve my life and my children's lives, but the lives of all eighteen thousand licensed professionals in CCSD. Ultimately, this will benefit and produce better outcomes for CCSD students as well. So I'm very grateful that CCEA and CCSD could finally come together to make all of this possible. Thank you.
At this time, colleagues, the public hearing is now closed. I would like to. Thank you, Mr. Hall. I want to make a motion to approve the negotiated agreement. And a memorandum of agreement authorized by Board Council to work with General Counselors who does signatory block in the memorandum of agreement for the Board of School Trustees, President and Court to sign. Where's my second? Trustee Cabasos?
I would like to second your motion, President Garcia Woodhouse, with a special shout out to our veteran teachers. Thank you.
Your trustee Cabasos. Colleagues, we have a motion by yours truly accepted by trustee Cabasos. Please cast your vote. Thank you, colleagues. That motion passes six to one. We're going to now move on to item five point one, the public comment on items not listed as action items on the agenda. Before I open item five point one, is there anyone who does not have a chance to complete a public speaker card? If not, please do so now. We're going to begin with the individuals who signed up in advance. We will wait until members of the audience. Find themselves at the door.
We have to teach tomorrow.
Yes.
I think we're, I believe we're ready. It sounds like the individuals who have left are ready to move on. There's a group who has left and I think the remaining folks who are ready for public comment under non-action items, items not listed on the agenda, excuse me. We'll start with the individuals who signed up in advance and then we'll go to yellow cards if there are any. We heard stuff first up is Jim Crazy followed by Alyssa Bird and Nicole Beer. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam. Apologies. Thank you, Madam President. Trustees, distinguished colleagues, Jim Crazy for the record. I would like to thank you for your vote and I would like to also just inform you what our thinking is. Why CCA is putting a ballot initiative to allow educators to strike? And it might seem like it's not necessary after this whole process is over and we'll forgive it. But that's just not the case because instead of ten months, this could have been settled in five days. And who truly hurt, who truly hurt? And I know that you care about this are our students who had to watch this, had to see the frustration, had to see the tired and basically broken in some cases educators come in and try to do her job and watch as four hundred educators left the district. And that can't happen again. That can't happen again. So I hope you understand that it is not a matter of hard feelings. It's a matter necessary for generations going forward because it's not just about us in this room in the moment. It's about the process going forward. I would also just like to say on a personal note that I was one of the people for the last two sessions of Carson City who advocated for appointed school boards. And this process playing out shows us why we need that. I'm going to go back up, not in an official role. My term ends very shortly, but to also press that they have a vote. I thank you for your time and I hope you have a good day.
Jim turned me off. Okay. Alicia Burr. I'm now here up here as a parent of a Las Vegas High School student and a former graduate myself of Las Vegas High School. I am asking you to look into the PAL program at Las Vegas High School and other high schools that offer internships to students. In a recent email to parents from Mr. Ortiz, the wonderful principal of Las Vegas High School, he stated, and I quote, "The PAL program has been at Las Vegas High School since nineteen ninety six. Thousands of students have learned valuable business skills while working at internships, internship sites across the valley. Many students have gotten hired by companies they have interned with and most receive positive recommendation letters from local businesses." Apparently, this is now my words, end quote, apparently due to new rules regarding background checks and fingerprintings, businesses are no longer able to have students as interns. Internships for this school year have halted at Las Vegas High School and this program is at risk of ending after this year. This will be detrimental to our CTE programs and our students who are looking to enter the workforce immediately after graduation. There has to be a way to continue to have students complete internships while ensuring their safety. We'd all know that safety is important. It would be so unfortunate to see this program and others around Clark County and it is important to offer career paths for students who may not be college bound and allowing internships is vital to their program. So please look into that. Thank you.
Where do I submit documents for the board to see? Thank you.
My name is Nicole Beer for the record. Tonight I'm speaking as a community member concerned CCSD teacher and the co-chair of Defense of Democracy, Southern Nevada. With permission of this board, I would like to take a ten second moment of silence to thank all the mothers and others out there for raising us. This one's for you, boss.
It's my time. Thanks so much. Thank you. In two thousand and nineteen, Dr. Jara and former trustee Garvey in Middle School Library and I started working on policy sixty one sixty one and sixty one fifty. Even COVID did not dissuade our mission that so many teacher librarians before us fought. And with the help of this board, we did it. We passed policy sixty one sixty one that requires a certified teacher librarian in every building. The updates to this policy had two final votes, both which passed seven to zero. Dr. Jara, Dr. Larson Mitchell, Dr. Mansell, countless rank and file librarians in this board did all you were tasked to do. We made national news, more publications than I can count. Most importantly, we're making differences both academically and in the community gains for our students. However, once again, I come before you with the name Ryan Cordia. My third concern over this failing administrator. Why failing? He failed this board, at least twenty veteran CCSD librarians, and he failed the students who walk the halls of this very building. He hired an elementary PE teacher. The documents have their license as is afforded by Public Records, not Doxing. He has failed the students who walk this, sorry. He has hired an elementary PE teacher to serve as a librarian of what should be a beacon of hope in North Town. My students feed into this school. I taught my entire career with CCSD in North Las Vegas and this is how they treat us. Are the students in North Las Vegas schools less deserving of a certified teacher librarian than students in Summerland or Green Valley where I live? Clearly rhetorical question. This is a message that it sends. When he does, what he does by gifting a position to a teacher who is not even allowed to teach any subject in any high school in Nevada until April of last year, never mind an academic specialized subject such as library should have been flagged by superintendent. His superintendent. He did not interview one veteran certified teacher. Madam President, I was born at night, but it wasn't last night. He violated the policy before the revision of the fall of twenty twenty three before this board and violating it now. This board and his supervisors that are silent. I am here today to call once again for the immediate resignation of Dr. Ryan, or sorry, mister. He certainly doesn't have a doctorate. And whatever regional superintendent approved his hiring plan. They have violated the wishes of this board when we do not follow policies. We think we are above bad things happen. Is this board and our region leadership just going to decide that we don't need to teach first grade in my school and it's okay? We just don't do it? You are lying. The good old days are creep back in. Remember the nineties when principals? Thank you. You did the idea. Close the rest on Twitter.
Jim Rim, James Bayless, followed by Dr. Tiffany Bemo. Mr. Bayless, Sarah?
Hello. So I guess I'm here for actually legal presentation. Name's James Bayless, veteran of politics, political investigator for the Judicial Committee in Washington DC. Ironically, the packet we found here, I got some follow up on it yesterday. What if I told you that's about this should be? The superintendent's twenty twenty thing from Ms. Daniel Ford. Ironically, I found the very payouts to Jeff Profit that they said didn't exist. And ironically, there's a bunch of other names here that are, you guys might want to look at because that's how somebody got to the global board. That's how we got, that's the money paid him to get there. So anyway, my thing is visual learning. So I have an idea with your guys' visual learning. Since you guys use your technology to scare the shit out of parents when we try to do lawsuits, how about you use that to teach the kids? That you have the technology, you don't have to pay for it, obviously. Well, unless you count the ten K that costs for me, then maybe. But the fact there is, is you guys have the technology to be doing this. I remember a public comment where I believe two of my favorite trustees were talking about digital learning and they got kind of stuck. But you guys do have the technology. You guys could even use Doodle. You guys use it. You guys have yearbook video editors. You guys can get it for free. Just give them extra credits on their editing. Novel concepts. Visual learning. You spent apartment has and you guys have get the funding for it, but you're not doing it. That would be considered grand fraud. Just putting that out there once again. So situation in hand, we've had a leaving going around for a while and I just wanted to correct someone. One thing you said two years. I've been personally coming up here three years for the same situation. So it might be a lot, actually a lot longer than we know. So as far as trustees, I love a lot of you guys. You guys have been doing what you can. Some is quite questionable, but a factor is, is you guys are with the visual learning guys. You really take, take account on that because most ninety, I would say about seventy five percent of students have ADHD. Our visual learners, they can't read and keep up to your normal attack. So they need the visual content, just like my son. You read them up. You put a book in front of them. You lost them. Put a video in front of you. You got them and you'll understand what he read. So that might be just a novel concept for you guys. This will be brought up later. So you should probably look into that. You guys have to be there. Thank you.
Dr. Bemo, followed by Doug South. Followed by Vicky Cradell.
Good evening, Dr. Tiffany Bemo for the record. Seven thousand six hundred fifty. That's how many minutes on AV block scheduled teachers see their students with no mister interrupted days in a school year. That equals out to a hundred and twenty seven and a half hours. That's all the time a teacher gets to make a connection. That's all the time the student gets to learn the content. Nine thousand nine hundred. That's the number of minutes and students and teachers spent together on a traditional schedule in the one hundred and eighty day school year. The type of schedule where students and teachers see each other every day for fifty five minutes. If a student misses the class period, it's not detrimental because they will probably see the teacher the next day. On AV block, if a student misses a day, they might not see their teacher for a week. For example, if a student missed last Thursday, they did not see their teacher again until this past Tuesday because of stop development day. That's a long time because the last time they were in class was the previous Tuesday, a full week prior. You might be sitting there asking yourselves, why is Dr. Bemo always preaching about block schedule? And the long and short of it is this, it's bad for kids and it's bad for business. Kids get bored on block. They already have shortened detention spans. After fifty minutes, they're done and at another thirty five minutes, they're more done. Have you ever watched these meetings after the fact? After thirty five minutes, you can see ice glass over and people start playing with their phones. Imagine you're fourteen and a captive audience member four times a day for eighty five minutes. Even the most engaging teacher struggles keeping students one hundred percent engaged with fidelity on block. Block is also expensive. Teachers cost roughly one hundred thousand dollars each on a school budget. And that's going up next year with the new contract. Block requires more teachers because schools have to offer more classes to fill schedules. But why? High school students only need twenty two and a half credits to graduate and on block, high school students are graduating with thirty plus credits. So why is CCSD footing the bill for all these extra credits for graduate? Fiscally, that makes no sense in a district that's already hemorrhaging money. Let's rough estimate for a second. If there are forty high schools on block and each has estimated five hundred seniors graduating, that's twenty thousand seniors, which is awesome, but the cost is astronomical because according to the math savvy students I teach, who actually figured this out for me, the cost is in the millions per year when you figure it out. And that's not even factoring in the students who failed and have to repeat courses in Edge Annuity and Apex, which is additional money. This is a failed experiment. It's time to cut bait and walk away. It's time to get rid of block. Kids are losing time in class every single high school year. Why aren't kids passing standardized tests? I'm hello, they don't get seat time to learn. Teachers are losing time to teach. Schools are losing valuable budget dollars. CCSD is losing money all over the place. This really is a no brainer. Save time, fill vacancies at schools that need teachers, get kids seat time and help combat learning loss because they will be able to see their teachers more often. How does this simple cost saving solution not make sense to anyone but a former single mom who had to live on a teacher salary for over a decade? Thank you.
Can I call out Vicky Cradell? Followed by Ernest Mackey, then Sharon.
Good evening. Sorry, my leg has kind of fell asleep in that chair. My name is Vicky Cradell. I'm reading teacher degrees one to five in CCSD and I'm the president of NEA of Southern Nevada. I'll be coming to you over the coming weeks to talk about things the district can do to try to retain the veteran teachers. I'm telling you, you are at risk of losing a lot of really good people. I hope you're listening. A lot of people are very unhappy right now. Because of that and some other factors that we're facing, we may be facing a critical staff shortage by next year. I know you all want to be proactive in doing things to stop the exit of our amazing licensed educators. Now I do want to talk to you about some educators that are being pushed out by administrators. I want to start by saying we have some truly wonderful principals in this district. I've had the honor of working for a couple who really helped me be a better teacher. Educators are like anyone else. Sometimes we struggle. When we have students who struggle, we figure out why and we do our best to try and give them the support they need to be successful. Why don't we do that for our educators? We know the amount of licensed educators is dropping daily. Can we really afford to be pushing people out of our schools instead of helping them improve? CCSD should have a mentoring program for struggling educators. Instead of just writing people up until they're terminated, why not use some of our most talented people to guide and support them back to their teaching best? It's really unfortunate that some of the educators who are being pushed out are end of career educators. These people have put decades of their life into teaching and get paid back by being made to feel inadequate on a daily basis. Recently, I've had several veteran educators call me and say things like, my principal was out to get me. I can't do anything right. Maybe teaching isn't for me anymore. That makes me very sad. I believe we can do better. Educators who struggle are not throwaways. They're not disposable. We need every licensed educator right now. So please let's help them. Thank you.
Ernest Mackey. Is Sharon here? Sharon, your next softer. Sharon, you're next after.
Up and down, I'm sorry. My name is Ernest Mackey. Wasn't here to say too much. But notice my time started before I even got to the speaker. But just want to say welcome to the board, all you new faces. Good that some of you were appointed here, and we need about four more new faces appointed here. Once again, I'm here again for the same old issue, which I've been coming for over two years. And still, we are wishing that I would just go away so the problem would go away. But you all, but the school is still targeting my children because every time I come up here the next day or the next following week, they'll be targeted by the staff and the principal. Now I've said this many times, and no one still has not contacted me, and you all know it. You all know it because I'm here every month telling you the same thing. Even I have the police staff not to even interfere or come to me to write up a report. They want to call me or set up a report to do this. They haven't yet. I had to talk to the captain here today to get that started. This is how slow you all wish issues would go away. But good, we see the new faces. We got four more we need to remove. We know four of you leaving. That's the pressure from us. We're going to put on more pressure. Thank you.
Sharon?
Cedric Cole, are you up here tonight? Cedric Cole?
Not mine or.
I might have to come back. Okay, so I know I've spoken to you all before. Is this working?
It should be green.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So I know I've spoken to you before and I feel like I woke up from a coma because you're talking about the same things I talked about two years ago. So I'm just, I'm really, I'm really amazed. I just, I saw, I saw Dr. Mansell. So he and I had a private conversation on the hallway, which I'm really, really happy that I was able to catch him with that. So I was in an IB school in 2019. So where we had, where we, where we had these qualities of an IB student, reflective. I think about my learning and I ask myself, how I can do better? Caring. I do not hurt anyone on the inside or the outside on the front. Risk taker, open minded, on all of those things. And because I came out of retirement and because I'm a woman of a certain age, the children respect that. I mean, here's, you know, I would say, oh, you showed a lot of respect again. Well, go put your name over here. So I'm a good teacher. I was there when Madeline O'Hare was involved in saying school prayers. I was there when Madeline Langwell was a Caldecott Award winner. I was there with Madeline Hunter. I was teaching with Madeline Hunter. I know all this stuff. I know literacy circles, but but the school district, you don't know, you don't know the value of the teachers. So I listen to Fox News, those are so rude people saying it's all the teachers fault. It's because of the teachers. Well, and so and I hear, it's all this disrespect. So I wrote to my daughter and I said, well, I'm going to, I'm going to speak at a board meeting. She's, I'm not going to tell you how old she is, but she retired after 34 years of teaching. She never had 30 pages of lesson plans to do. Her husband retired at 35 years of teaching. He may go back. My, so I have three grandchildren who graduated college. One, my grand girl graduated and worked for a nonprofit in California. My grand boy is a minister, a youth minister, and he's expecting twins in June, in June. My grand girl just had my great grandson, and he couldn't study hard enough to get off his air supply, his oxygen supply. Took him six weeks, but pretty gifted. He learned how to flip over at eight, at seven weeks old. So for six weeks, for six weeks, he was on oxygen. So.
Sharon, hi Sharon, forgive me, that is your time. Can you state your last name for the record? Thank you, Ms. Wheeler.
Yeah.
Appreciate.
But the reason I came here is too obvious because.
You're welcome to submit your public comment in writing if you'd like, and that could allow us all to see it. Thank you. Mr. Underwood, you're next, followed by Lorena and Erica Neely.
Timothy Underwood, been going to CCSD school since 1965. Pardon my ungentle words. With that vision, the young men perish. Restorative justice has morally blinded our schoolchildren. This strange set of ideas for dealing with violent students was spawned by Governor Sicilac. Then this grotesque DEI nostrum was put on steroids by Superintendent Jesus Hera in his deconstruction campaign of the only values about justice that have worked for thousands of years. He has rejected the basic notion of reality, removed even the idea of a transcendent universal standard that every violent student must face. Instead, he replaced it with segregation. In CCSD, if your skin has the right color, you will not face justice for perpetrating violence. Truth is not the issue anymore, only might and race. So as is plain to see today, Jesus Hera's restorative justice has bred relapse and recidivism in violent students. Then when you understand boys need adventure, and if they find it in violence, especially game violence, you have the perfect recipe for trouble. When they take that desire to push the envelope, as every adventurer must do, in the realm of crime instead of peaceful, nonviolent adventure sports, academic debates, intellectual pursuits, or other peaceful but demanding and highly competitive ways. The Hera effect is to take away the chance to achieve excellence from young, energetic, adventurous boys of color. The DEI mongers give boys of color only mediocre goals that do not interest or motivate them, that tell them they are not qualified to do what white folks and Asian people do, that they cannot adequately compete with them. So they need government help. And if they are frustrated or feel bad, then they can take it out on the oppressor, white and Asian students by occasionally beating one up or stealing his vape pen and calling him up to fight for it after school across the street in an alleyway. Hera has advocated his responsibilities as a school superintendent to provide the children with a good and safe education in pursuit of his other goals, strange and foreign goals to Clark County families, goals that ignore basic human reality and common sense for because they aim for a different purpose than what the school parents of CCSD desire in a superintendent. The violent boys who murdered Jonathan Lewis Jr. deserve harsh punishment. Many years in prison with no parole, and Jesus Hera is directly responsible for the district-wide campus culture of violence that dominates CCSD campuses, and he must be held to higher account. Clark County school families need great relief from the Hera effect. Thank you.
It's Jarra. I think you were trying to say Lorena, you're up, followed by Erica Neely, and then Timothy. I have two cards for you. I believe that was Timothy as well. Although that was Lorena. Timothy, he's done. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lorena Viasluti. With the violent problem in CCSD schools, I was first taken aback to read Discipline Based on Restorative Justice. Quite the oxymoron. Restorative justice is, in very short terms, another form or method of achieving justice. Howard there introduced restorative justice practices in the 70s, but didn't make it in our schools until the social justice movement began. Sarah felt that the community was often victimized and needed to have its needs addressed, just like individual victims, but that it also needed to step up to the plate and accept its responsibility, shifting blame from the offender to the victim. In the classroom, these practices fail to take action against misbehaving students in a manner that will dissuade their behavior. There has to be tough consequences to bad behavior. How is this not common sense? But then again, why am I still asking this board that? Instead, kids get pushed along in the name of social justice. I wonder now how many of those kids sitting in jail for the murder of Jonathan Lewis right now had a history of violence. When you fail to correct their behavior, you fail everyone. Teachers are left to clean up this failed approach to discipline. Trying to teach students who disrupt and impede their ability to teach, it's not fair to anyone. Let it be clear, when you don't punish the offender, what you're really doing is punishing the victim. Restorative justice is a failed experiment. It is the K21 version of defund the police, and how has that worked out for society? Think about that next time you go to a convenience store and are treated like a thief who can't have access to the products on the shelf without permission. This is the generation these failed restorative justice policies are breeding. As far as the books still in our libraries go, like Gender Clear and Flamer, I invite you all to flip through the pages. Please get your hands on these books, read it, and if you still feel like fighting parents who want to remove these books that rape the innocence of our children, make no mistake, you are a sick and perverted individual. We will continue to work actively to fight this violation to our children. For all those teachers complaining, struggling with their wages and the cost of living, stop voting for Biden. It's that easy. Also, what do all your degrees count for when you lack the most basic common sense? Thank you and good night.
Followed by Hannah Binder.
Hello. Hello, everyone. Last time I was here, I gotta admit, I was a little rude. I want to apologize. I want to apologize because I told my daughter that this is the faces of what violence in the classroom looks like because of your policies. And then I told her that you guys didn't care. The reality is, you do care. You care that there's violence. You care that the kids are learning. They're not learning how to read. They're graduating at fifth grade reading level. So I apologize if I was being rude. You do care. You care that our kids are not learning their reading, writing, and math. So there's my apology. You guys are a disgrace. Samora, Cabasos, Bustamantes, Morales, Hispanic community. This is, we are the 50th in the nation, and your name is going down with that. This is a disgrace. I do want to share another story with you. I have a 25-year-old son that goes to Clark County, did go to Clark County. He was in third grade reading at a fifth grade reading level when these policies took place, not reading, putting sight words in here. Then he went to fourth grade reading at a fifth grade reading level. Then he went to the sixth grade reading at a fifth grade level. Here we are in 2024, and kids are still graduating at a fifth grade reading level. That is because of the policies you guys put in place. I have good news. Before you guys came in here, before the United States was number one in reading, writing, and math, we have the roadmap of how to turn all this around. I suggest that you look at it. All these things that you're putting in place is the roadmap of disaster. Thank you for proving that. Anyway, I just wanted to say that. Thank you so much for your time.
Spider?
Good evening, everyone. Just so you know, nobody has brought up food yet, and I want to let you know the nacho war on Axe Twitter is just off the hook, and I'm hungry. So I'll make this super quick. First off, Mr. Cordia, because of Mr. Cordia, my son is turning 21 years old next week, is joining Metro. He joined our Nevada National Guard as a junior under Mr. Cordia's. You be quiet. Mr. Cordia really took Stephen in. Stephen really had a really difficult time, and if it wasn't for Mr. Cordia, I don't know where Stephen would be today. We provided everything that we could for him, but Mr. Cordia was able to connect with that kid like nobody. And I apologize out loud that he was disrespected in his own house. I've known him for many years. I have another child who's a senior at SAKTA right now who was also under that. He is greatly missed in the SAKTA community. But anyways, I want to make that clear. I also want to take an opportunity for anyone still listening that I'm not sure many, how many people have read the Nevada Commission on School Fundings report. They put years of work into that. And there is so much information in that report that will take us into the next session. I've already asked a couple of people in our, in our state and our community how we can help lead veteran teachers into closing whatever gap they feel they were left out of. Obviously, it is a policy issue. It's a funding issue, and we all do need to stop pointing fingers and work together. But if you have not had an opportunity to read that report, it leaves a foundation for all of the advocacy for it. So nobody has to attack anyone. So hopefully, as we move forward, we can come together with that. So another thing tonight, and I missed it, I'm sorry, because I want to put on the record that again on another board night, I was late tonight because my youngest son's stud bus. This happens every time I want to come to a board meeting. You guys know this. My son did not get dropped at my front door until 4:56 tonight. That bus left campus at 3:15, and I live four miles from that school. Why was my autistic son, non-verbal, stuck on a bus for two hours tonight when everybody knows I was planning to be here? This is probably what my fifth or sixth meeting over the last two years that, very specifically on a board night, my son's bus is over two hours late. And I always say that I know and I feel it's a joke in the system. Anyways, some other words that I don't want to leave here tonight without, we do have new faces. And thank you guys all for your work, and I'm sorry you're being treated in ways that most of us aren't seeing as being very favorable for you, but there's. Oh, I did, okay. Unproven, unqualified, under.
Okay, Ms. Binder, you can submit your comments in writing if you'd like to continue your remarks. All right, you know the drill. Item 6.01, the upcoming meeting of the board of trustees, it's Wednesday, February 7th, 4:00 PM. The city of Henderson has graciously agreed to host us. We're very thankful for their support. My colleagues, we are now moving on to adjournments. I see trustee Williams eager to adjourn. Trustee Zamora? Okay, trustee Williams motions to adjourn. Trustee Zamora?
Second motion.
Thank you, trustee Zamora. Colleagues, we have a motion by trustee Williams, a second by trustee Zamora. Please cast your vote. That is, this is Zamora. Motion passes 7 to 0. The time is at 8:48 PM. Thank you very much and have a great evening.